I will call to order the regular date and the city consummated for January 20th. Please stand up and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any approval of agenda? Any motion or second?
A motion.
A second.
Any discussion?
I was wondering if we could move item D of the consent agenda out of consent?
Yep.
We'll just place it right below consent agenda so we'll have an open item before open forum.
Before?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other changes? Okay, so with that...
No changes, but I want a discussion on D.
Yeah, well, no, D, we're just, we just pulled it out.
Yep.
Did you say D or B?
D.
D is dog.
I circled D.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries five zero. Consent agenda. Need a motion or a second?
A motion.
A second.
Any discussion? So D, we've moved out.
Yeah, I have just a couple of things. Well, maybe just one now. Item, item F, approving purchasing of a wood chipper. And Marty, I guess I'm, I'm just curious on that one. I know it goes past the budget and you guys have figured out a way to be more efficient on some other purchases. But the one thing that stood out on it for me was that there's a $22,000 engine upgrade on that bid. It seems like a ton.
It's not an upgrade, is it? On that, that one, the option is the, the engine package isn't part of the base bed. So you have to put the engine in as part of the option package because they put various sizes of engines in there. So that's where the confusion is.
Okay, so you don't have a choice. You gotta pick a package.
You gotta pick a package, yeah. You gotta pick an engine that goes in there.
Bicycle chain and some pedals. So that's the base unit and then if you want an engine...
Yeah, it's just, it's just a box and then you fill it up.
Okay, thank you.
Then haul it over to the, yeah.
Yeah, that just seemed odd to me.
I know, it's an odd way doing it. That's the only way that I could think of putting it in a staff report that would make sense.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have a question there too when you get done, Dave.
That is all. I had a question around the remodel of the fire department office, but I did go back and see that that is budgeted, so that answered my question.
Scott?
Uh, my question on the chipper, Marty, would be of the three bids, what made the Tri-State unit? I'm assuming, and then after seeing the packet here, this is just an assumption, the, the big pile of chips down at the old...
Yep.
Was that the test site?
No, that was the last couple of weeks of chipping that we did with the rented chipper.
Oh, okay. Uh, I'm kinda surprised that we don't, I mean, I see there's an RDO bid in there.
Yep.
For some reason, now that unit would be, I don't see a 12% discount on that one, but...
It's included in the price.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's included in the price.
Okay.
So they've included that as part of their bid.
Okay. So indirectly, the Tri-State one is the cheapest unit then?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. That's, that was my question. Why we didn't go after the near unit?
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Consent passes five to zero. Item D. amended fee schedule.
All right.
Go ahead. You can go.
Well, you know, in, in reviewing the piece of it and specifically around the rental licenses, I'm having a hard time getting my arms around our fees. I did look at a couple of other communities and we, we would be way high. I was comparing mostly on apartment kinds of things. Where we, as I understand it, we're at a thousand, uh, 500 a year essentially for an apartment license, a thousand dollars for a two-year license, and then $50 per unit for inspection.
Yes.
And what I've seen in other communities is more like a $200 license and 15 to 17 dollars a unit for the inspection piece. What I worry about with this, and it relates to the single-family ones also, is that this, this number, whatever it lands on being, in my view, just goes on the rent. And so what's it costing the resident of those rental units? I doubt that the, the owner of the apartment building or the, or individual house is, is gonna be just gracious enough to eat that number. So I'm concerned that, that we seem to be kind of out a step with other, other communities on, on this one. I know when you talked about it initially, Zach, we had some extra inspection kinds of things that were consuming a bunch of time and I, so I think it's legitimate to, to increase that or to, you know, to deal with it with three inspections and stuff and fees around that. But I, you know, comparing, all right, since we have one later in the, you know, on our agenda, I used a 180-unit apartment building. As I understand our numbers, that, that total for inspections and license comes out to $53 a unit per year. And what I see in other communities is in the 18 to $20 per unit range. So that just seems like too much to me. I guess that's why I...
Do you have a suggested price?
I don't have any suggestion for that. I just think we should be more in line with what the area around us is.
Actually, I, I went through the circle. And the only one I found anywhere close to what we're providing, or what we're pondering is Maple Grove, and that was 570 per unit. That was for three years. And they were 750 plus 45 per. They were by far the highest. The rest of them are all about a hundred dollars a unit. Champlin is 15 per room plus 100 for apartments. Alkerber's the same. So yeah, it just seemed like we were significantly higher. Anoka's 300 per unit, but that's for three years. And they have a $10 per apartment plus 170. Ramsey's 15 dollars per apartment plus 600. I mean, you know, when you think about it, inspectors are gonna go, you know, room to room and it's, it's gonna get done in a heartbeat. So it seems like, it seems like, it seems like that's a lot of money per apartment. And I think it's a lot of money per unit. So I definitely have a hard time with that number.
So Mr. Mayor, if, if I could add, so I've had this issue in previous cities and in my previous city, the fees was based on what the city's cost was of administering the program. So it was staff time and, and, you know, vehicles and everything else that was, you know, essentially quantified per structure. And what we came up with was a hundred dollars per building, $25 per unit, plus reinspection fee. So, you know, we can do the math and try to figure it out, but, you know, we're, we're hiring a fire marshal, there's expenses with it. So if, in looking at this and, you know, renting a property, it is a business, it's a business license, the city has costs in administering that, so, you know, either the, the apartment owner's gonna, well, either way, the apartment owner's gonna pass that cost on to the renter. If not, then the city is subsidizing that, that license program.
I, I have a hard time believing, for example, the 500 per unit. When I walk through in my head, how long it's gonna take to inspect and even do the paperwork in here. I have a hard time with that. That's eight hours.
Yeah.
Apartments is probably more reasonable.
For, per, just to provide a little insight, it's about an hour and a half of, which I had mentioned to you, it's about an hour, maybe Scott, I can't remember which one, talked to a couple of people today on the council, so it's about an hour and a half per year of just paperwork to be done with rentals, whether it's contacting them, letting know that you have a license here, you have to update a spreadsheet, you have to update some contact information. It's about an hour and a half per year for our staff time. And right now, staff time is about $75 an hour if you include salary plus benefits.
Yep.
Roughly in there. So you got hour and a half per year, so that's three, three hours, so that's $225, and then it's an hour of Metro West time for every inspection, that's who they bill us. Because the cost, it takes them time to inspect it and they also have to do the paperwork when they get back to the office, send it back to their clerical stuff, make sure everything's good to go there, send it over to us. We then contact the applicant. And there is sometimes that we go back and forth to them, multiple times, that we don't charge them anything additional. So we'll go back and forth to them of what they need provided, what we did. I did have a conversation with the individual who handled it in the office here, and she goes, "Yeah, sometimes I'll contact somebody three, four, or five times before they'll give me what I need for the rentals to get it scheduled with Metro West to actually go out and do the inspection." So there is quite a bit of staff time, more than what we were charging with $75. Our best stab at it was 500. There was some time and a little bit of the excess dollars that were put in there. And the reason for that is that there is some additional things that come with rentals that may or may not happen. But again, we're trying to figure out what that good balance is. The $75 was unreasonable for two years, it just wasn't. We were subsidizing that, that, that program with tax levy, and that's not acceptable, at least from my perspective. If 500 is not per unit, our costs are $300 per unit, that's just our cost. So that's what it would be for, it's a two-year license. So right now, like Atsigo, it's a hundred dollars per year and then you have to have an inspection every year, it's not $65 to pay for that. So there's just 330 bucks for two years to have that same rental in Atsigo. So, and I know that one, and then same thing with Champlin, I believe it's like 150 bucks a year, so roughly $300 biannually. Ours just happens to be for two years, so...
Champlin was a hundred dollars per apartment plus 15 dollars per unit.
Is it an inspection fee though?
There, I, I didn't, I didn't see any.
That is the, that is the charge.
That's the charge?
The charge is a hundred plus 15 per unit.
Okay.
And I absolutely agree, we, we wanna be covering our costs on this.
Yep.
This is, this program needs to fund itself.
So at 500 dollars over two years, we're talking 6.6 hours of staff time over two years.
Um, yeah.
575.
Yep, yep.
So it's six point, so it's 3.3 hours a year that we're allotting to spend on this.
Yes.
Three hours and 20 minutes a year. And how much do you think we spend per year on each one?
Probably about 150 bucks. Except, it depends, because Metro West does an inspection...
Two hours and then Metro West...
...once every two years. So we spend...
So why do we, so if this is a two-year license...
Yep.
Why would we be doing anything in the second year?
It's like I said, updating the spreadsheet, you know, just make sure everything's updated, contacting Metro West if they have any other things that cap in.
But they only inspected the ones...
Correct, they only inspected once, once every two years, yes. And we do understand that there is, you know, some economies of scale that happen with multiple rentals, like when somebody has five or six or 10 rentals in one spot, I mean, there is some economies of scale, but we typically get billed an hour or a half hour, depending on how often they're, they're in, which ones they're doing by Metro West to do one. Again, it's not just the time that they spend in that building, they have to then document it, put it in field inspections process, and then also take back to their admins. And I, the, the fees are put on here as a, again, this is what staff is suggesting. The council is the final say, so I am not saying that what's on here is, you know, perfect by any means, but...
I also feel that the 500 bucks is way out of line. Just say a guy's got, if you have four units, that's 2,000 bucks. And say you have a four-unit townhome, it's not gonna take more than an hour inspection for all four units. And say two or three hours worth of staff time, we're collecting two grand for that for roughly 300, 400 dollars worth of cost. So in my opinion, I mean, I, I did some look into between Rogers, Albertville, St. Michael, I didn't find anybody with the, more than a hundred dollars a year per, per single family. I don't necessarily have a real big issue with the apartment thing, that I think the 500 bucks, that's a little bit steep. The highest one I found there was 400 dollars. So I guess maybe the, the 500 dollars is, is a little bit steep.
Ramsey's is 600, but it's 15 per year.
I didn't, I just, those are the three I looked at.
Yeah.
I can't support the 500 at all, I think it's way out of line. And it's more of a, in my, in my eyes, it's more of a, hey, we're gonna hit them with a big fine just so we can defer people from even wanting to rent things out. I mean, that shouldn't be the purpose by no means, but...
I mean, I'll be honest, we, we would rather have owner-occupied homes than, than renter, rent, rental homes. At least that's from staff perspective, there's typically less police activity that happen at owner-occupied homes. Not always, now there are always anomalies to each one of these situations. And then there's also the ability that they wanna stay here, they're an owner-occupied facility. And we were trying to eliminate, so Maple Grove's fee is fairly high, and the reason for that is that they don't wanna have rentals because there is, you know, the businesses were making money off of them. They're having businesses buy houses, and that then hurts people who are trying to buy a house for the first time, trying to buy single-family homes, they can't do it because a business will buy it and then they'll rent it out for nuke bucks, and that's what's happening, so...
Their apartments are really high too, 750 plus 45 per unit.
Yeah, like I said, these numbers were just put together as, here, here's an example of what they are, and then there's discussion points essentially.
One thing, so Ramsey, what they do is, if you're looking at police calls, they jack up the fee per call you have. So the next year, if you have, you know, it's the same thing we talked about last time with the number of mortars, but we accumulated these, you know, you, these calls over the year. And if you're over a certain amount, if you're over three in a year, you don't get a rental license. And then each one, it goes up, I think it was like 500 bucks per call in the past year.
Yeah, so those will go to the, then renter or the homeowner?
Uh, well, it's gonna be the homeowner, but it would be the renter. I mean, these guys aren't gonna carry this cost.
Correct, yep, I'm just, yeah, that's what I'm gonna make sure that everyone's doing, I mean, trying to figure out what, what they're, and I'm not saying they're...
Every dollar, he's gonna get, is gonna plug on, so, I, yeah, I...
We can add that into if that's something that we wanna do for rental housing thing, is that we do a one, two, three strikes, you're all kinda thing? Just like we did with the liquor?
Are you gonna go after the owner of the building, or are you going after, you gotta go after the, it's gonna be pretty hard to go after the individual renting that apartment.
Well, it would be the rental license.
Right, which is the owner.
Yeah, so then you're going after the owner for doing something that one of the tenants is doing, that's a little bit difficult. I mean, do they have recourse? I mean, you can't get that guy out of that house.
Yeah, but if they write the contract well enough, then they should be able to get them out of the house, and we need their help to get them out of the house, because we've had issues in the past. Since I've been on council this last year, where we've had a house where...
Right.
...the police were there multiple times, we had a hard time getting it taken care of, and it was a big issue for the neighboring homeowners. Their party had flown to the neighbors' homes multiple occasions, so like, we need something that, we need them to be, have some skin in the game too. Otherwise, you get where it's like, oh, a management company takes care of it, I don't do it. Well, sorry, too bad, we just lost your rental. Now we've helped take care of the issue, right? So, and I do see, I, I don't have a problem where the fees are, the 500 or the 300 doesn't matter for two years, doesn't matter to me, I'll go along with whatever. But there is the piece, I think, I've overlooked, which is, I've lived in communities in the past where a lot of the homes are rentals, and to try to get into that, when you're trying to buy that home, you were bidding against people that didn't wanna live in the home, they wanted to buy the home as a business. So if you are a first-time home buyer, where you're trying to buy, you're not trying to buy a brand-new home, you're trying to buy an existing home, it does by default reduce the amount of first-time homeowners you're gonna get, because it's gonna jack up the prices for homes that they can often afford. So that is the, if we get too many rentals, that can be a bit of a deterrent for all of getting those individuals in the community as well, one way or the other. Again, I don't, where we're going with that, I think it's just a good point, and I'm not...
I think that's a great point, and maybe, you know, I don't know that we've tipped over to that level. I know, do know Champlin has got some kinda ordinance around rental density and residential areas, and that's something we could talk about separately from this, but it may be something that we need to do at some point.
On, whatever number, as long as it covers our costs, because I don't think we should be subsidizing, subsidizing the rentals. So as long as the city is comfortable saying that's gonna cover our costs, I'm good.
So we were at 75 bucks for every two years or every...
Every two years, yeah. So we were heavily being subsidized by tax levy. So that's why our costs are roughly $300 and give or take 10, 15, I mean, I'm not worried about that, but, I mean, our costs are roughly $300 for two years, so 150 bucks a year.
Who's Metro West or does not?
Who's Metro West, yeah.
So how did you get that 300? I still have a hard time believing.
So you have, yeah, you have roughly three hours of staff time. It's, and it's, it's heavy on one end, so it's heavy on the year that they have their renewal, so that's reaching out to the, that's sending a letter. We send typically two letters out to let them know that your rental license is gonna be expiring.
Sure.
Then your rental license is expired, then they'll contact us back, fill out the application, we then have to file with Metro West, we have a spreadsheet that we maintain them with.
Yeah.
Then we have Metro West do the inspection, come back, they do that, then they give us back the paperwork, we put the work back in the, in the system that we have for building permits so that it's documented.
Yep.
We then have the cash receipt brought in, that gets documented, that gets updated with the spreadsheet, and then also we then contact them back, say everything's good to go, here's your license.
How much does Metro West charge us?
Roughly an hour. They charge us an hour, that's on average.
At what price is it?
$75 an hour currently. That's our current cost. That's $75, and then...
So three hours.
Then three hours of staff time between...
And when this thing happens?
Yes, correct. And it's, most of it is happening on that year, you know, on, on the...
On the renewal year.
On the renewal year, yeah.
Yeah.
And then there might be, you know, a half hour of time or something that happens when they're rotating the spreadsheet over and updating the things and trying to, you know, maintain the spreadsheet properly and checking the building permit stuff and verifying things. Because people will call and say, "Hey, is there a rental license on this?" So I may have to go in and check and verify there's a rental license on it, and if there's not, then we gotta send the letter out. So like I said, it's heavy on one end, but our costs are roughly three hours. I, I went through this with the individual that does it in the house, and she says, "Yeah, it's roughly three hours." That's what it cost my time.
Okay, here's, here's my proposal. Because there is a need to change it, I mean, $75 is way off base. I'm good with a 150 a year, so 300 bucks. And on the apartment, I'd go, I'd double that. I think the $50 per unit is up there. I'd cut that in half to 25 because it, Metro West is gonna, they're gonna go through 30, 40 units in a matter of no time.
Yeah, it takes, takes a rough...
A half a day and it's done.
It's probably 10 minutes or so, it depends on what, you know...
Somebody might not be home or whatever, but then, then I'm sure they're just gonna walk out.
We have both Metro West and the fire marshal going with them, both of those things.
We don't have a fire marshal.
We currently do, yes, we do.
What do you want?
Yeah, that's Gary.
Oh, oh, yeah. He hasn't done one yet.
He has, yeah, he did both some late apartments.
Oh, did he?
Yep, that was the first one he's been on.
The new one?
Yep.
Okay. Awesome.
So what do you say then?
300 on apartment, $25 per unit.
Yeah, so the ones on apartment buildings, we have two inspections, both the fire marshal and the building inspector. And then for single-family ones, we only have the building inspector, so there's no fire marshal walking out. So you said 300 bucks per unit for single-family, and then instead of $50, $25 per unit.
Yeah.
And everything else stays the same?
The thousand, then they're safe?
Stays the same. No, not the, the thousand on the apartment, no, I, I knocked it down, I doubled the, I doubled the single-family. Is that enough?
Is that what you said?
That's what I said.
The apartment...
300 for the apartment plus 25 per unit.
So 300 dollars per year.
You're really making it up on the per-unit number.
Yeah, so 300 dollars per year for the apartment, so 600 dollars per building, or 300 dollars per building, for two years. I'm talking for two years now, so that's what I'm trying to, the problem with comparing to other communities is a lot of them do them annually, biannually, triannually, so...
Somewhere three, somewhere one.
Yeah, so...
Okay, so 300 on the apartment and 20, plus 25 a unit, and then on, on single-family, what did you...
No, you went 600 on the apartment.
150 bucks.
Oh, per...
150 dollars on single-family.
Per year.
150.
Per year.
So, so 300, our, our rules, our things are written two years.
300 for the two-year permit.
And then 600 dollars for the apartment for two years.
He wants the apartment twice.
I think 500, there is enough, but whatever, personally.
Okay, 300 a year, both, or 300 a year on apartments, meaning 600 for the license.
Yes.
And 300 for the license on the single-family.
Yes.
And are we doing anything with the 100 dollar inspection on single-family?
No, that, with that 150 buck dollars annually covers the whole thing.
Are you saying the reinspection required?
Well, if they have a reinspection?
That's what says, reinspection required prior to licensing, it's 100 dollars per inspection.
Well, if, if they don't pass the first time, it's not, it's not our fault, it's their fault.
David's asking if you wanna change that, I believe, is what you're asking, correct?
Yeah, and what I'm hearing is no.
No. Okay. I'm not arguing in one way, I'm just trying to help get us all on the same page, that's all.
I think we should, we should look at that too from, I mean, the whole reason that, at least from Metro West's comments when they were here, the whole reason deck inspections are, are more than what you think is because of failed inspections. And we don't hit, I mean, to me, if you fail an inspection, electrical's the same way, if you fail, you gotta get them back out again, you gotta reapply for a permit. So to me, if you fail an inspection, that should be on that person that failed.
Do you think it should be the same price for the reinspection as the original licensing?
Is with, well, depending, well, that's a mess. If you wanna get into the building inspection, that's a mess, that needs to be fixed. I don't know how you'd do that.
I'm just talking about for these four lines that we're dealing with in that...
Yeah, these, I, I, I just leave it alone for now.
Okay, so everyone is okay with 300 dollars for the single-family for two years, 600 dollars for apartments for two years.
Plus 25 per unit.
And then 25 dollars per unit.
Yeah. Are we good there, or is it...
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I just need some...
We change this every year, we're not...
I mean, yeah, this is...
We can change it mid-year, so if all of a sudden we do an apartment and it comes back really far negative, Zach should tell us, like, "Hey, we were way under and we lost our butts on this," so we can change it.
And I'm sure you guys will hear from the applicant if it's way far over, like...
Yeah, so...
I was gonna say, well, they won't know.
Yeah, so I, I think either way, we just need to, we can put it in there, but we need to be open to changing this even mid-year if we need to, if things, all of a sudden we find out we're losing money. Because I'm okay with whatever it is, as long as you're not losing money.
Or making money.
Sure. We're, we're gonna be close either way, like, give or take a small margin.
I think that's our...
Trying to make a couple hundred bucks.
Obligation anyway is to cover our costs and
Agreed.
And not use it as a profit center.
All right.
Now, is that, is that the only fee that we want to go after?
I mean, there's a couple of them that I have to talk about and discuss, so you have, I mean, there's only one technical change that I gave you guys, which is that mechanical permit one that I gave you on the agenda that was read. And that's because I didn't follow the building code when I updated that one. I just did a blanket update, so. And that's for non-residential apartment buildings, so that's just based on valuation because that's their designation.
Well, and, and I, I guess I assumed it was in here, but did that deck get changed back to the 275?
275, yep.
Okay.
And then the other one that I need to change, which I did not note before, is on the last page, it says we updated everything to 65 percent, which you guys did during the meeting. I updated everything and forgot, and included the master plan to designated new construction. That technically per the building code, I got called by Mike today, that's actually 25 percent. So, um, the, uh, second to last page, sorry, of that fee schedule. It says master plan designated new construction homes. So the reason why a builder will do a new master plan is so they only pay 25 percent of the plan check fee.
Right.
25 percent of the permit fee. So that needs to be amended, which is, again, small change, but follows the building code.
Okay. Yeah, that one.
That's the only ones I have for changes.
Okay.
So I have a, a question, and I'm not sure if, you know, it, I guess it, it could fit here because we're talking about fees, but it's related specifically to the, um, the Braeburn Trails Development Agreement. So as I read this, then, the fee schedule are, the, the initial escrow is, is 4 percent?
Yes.
But in that development agreement, it says 3.
Okay, it needs to be updated to 4. Uh, 3 was our old percentage of escrow, which may be where we got that number from. Um, when Amy was updating, Amy in general worked on the DA, so it should be 4 percent of all the fees, not 3 percent, so. Very good catch, but it should be 4 percent.
So I can give you the page number on that if I could read my own notes. Page 92 of our packet.
Okay. Make sure to get that updated. But yeah, that was updated, I think it was actually updated last year in the fee schedule because we were losing money. And I, when I say losing money, I mean, we had to keep billing them every single time, going back for more money. So it makes more sense just to collect it upfront, so we're not going back 15 times to get more dollars. And that's like engineering time and, and planning time and anything else we have to go with, the public works time.
That's essentially actual cost, is where the final number is, right? You just want to have a little better buffer.
Exactly. It's more or less, we're using, utilizing it more often, and builders are taking longer to do developments. So then they take longer to do things, longer, it takes longer time to do stuff, so they just draw it out more. And then we end up going back to bill them, like I said, like year two or three, so. Makes more sense just to do it upfront.
Okay.
Okay, so an immediate motion and a second for the amended fee schedule. Amended, amended.
Correct. I won't make a motion.
No second.
Any more discussion? All those in paper, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries four to one. All right, on to open forum. Is anybody here for open forum? Nobody online?
I'm not used to checking that because normally Amy is here to check. We have no one on, no one on Zoom.
Right. Staff consultant council updates.
Yes, good evening, mayor members of council. I have just a couple of updates, a reminder that we will have a work session at the next council meeting. Council meeting is three weeks from today, so you have an extra week between council meetings. Enjoy your extra Tuesday. And then one other update is that this past Thursday, city staff hosted the Senate Bonding Committee, which I let you guys know about through the um, email. I will apologize I did not let you know beforehand, so that was, all of you, that was, um, again, my fault. I, weekly updates, I did not include that, but we did have, host them to try to promote our $7 million worth of requests for wellhead treatment and water, and the water tower for the Northwest Water System here in Dayton, so. And we will hope that that goes forward. We have three different angles. We put that $7 million request through. One through the CPF, which is our Community Project Funding Request that happened through the state. One through the legislation, uh, or the Senate, and one through the House as separate bills, so. Let's cross our fingers we get some money. That's all I got. Thank you.
Morning.
Mayor and council, I have a couple of things. Uh, filtration plant update, um, the base, uh, stuff that they poured on the 28th is, uh, still curing, um, the tire rebar for basin walls still in there. Um, they formed up, uh, the, the basin walls, and they're gonna be pouring the next pour of concrete, oh, well. What's the date today? They poured it yesterday, so that's in. Um, that's the basin wall on the north end. The next, uh, week or two, and they're gonna keep working on the north, uh, basin wall, keep that blanket and warm to cure. Uh, tie more rebar for the south basin walls, um, they're gonna be installing forms for the south basin walls. And they're hopefully gonna be pouring concrete for that, that section, uh, at 31st of January. So that's moving along. AMI system, um, just a quick update, the installation of the antenna is happening this week, um, at, uh, the water tower. Um, they put the additional antenna for the old village down, um, at McNeil on one of the light poles down there. Um, so that's moving along. I'm hoping to have that, uh, infrared beta test in, uh, by middle of February.
What was that for?
That's for the AMI system, the, the automatic meter reading.
The water.
Um, the ice shrinks are open if you're quick. Their lights are on central from 5 till 10, so, um, we'll try and keep it as best we can. Um, the guys been, without the, the snow to keep them occupied, they've been doing a lot of tree trimming, they've done a lot of cleanup, um, of dead wood and tree removals, um, at Elsie Stevens Park there. It looks remarkably different, um, so there's a lot of stuff going on there. And they're working on a bunch of fabrication projects and the shop welding projects and stuff like that. That's all I have.
Paul?
Nothing.
Tom?
For a preview for the, the February 13th work session, so there's kind of two items. So one is I'm gonna ask the council to find what does rural character mean, or what does it look like? And then the second is a discussion of reducing, uh, uh, the minimum lot size in the agricultural district from 40 acres to 10. So two significant, uh, problems to solve.
It's only taken five, six years.
Jason?
And there's a time limit, too.
What?
Well, we're gonna start at, uh, what, 5?
Yeah.
Now we have to solve problems.
Uh, Nord, Dave, sir?
Amy?
Nothing for me?
Scott?
No.
Travis?
None?
None. Nothing for me.
I got a couple. Uh, I listened to the EDA meeting, uh, they talked about getting a broker. I know that's something we talked about for the city. I think we don't just need more for the EDA, we need one for the city. I know you've interviewed people before, so I don't know if we need to do a full RFP, but, you know, we thought we had narrowed it down to somebody. But I think you're right, we do need one, you and I have been talking about for about a year. Uh, the other thing, I don't know, is we're brought to the EDA by knowing we're having open EDA spot. The EDA, uh, only allows current business owners in the city of Dayton to be on the EDA. Have we thought about opening that up to other business owners outside or, say, C-suite folks? If we have the, the CEO of Best Buy, for example, lives in Dayton, which he, he does not, but if he did, allowing him to be on there may be good to provide insights as to how we could get other large companies to think about making their headquarters here in Dayton. So I thought, in my mind, it might be a miss of how we're approaching our EDA, but my understanding, unless I misread it, which I may have, was that you have to have, your business has to be in Dayton to be on the EDA.
Um, my understanding was a business or a resident. Is that not the case?
Nope, it is, as far as, as far as it's written and understood, unless Amy has a different reading because she's had the EDA bylaws, but she may not have read them before the meeting, so on the spot. But as far as I was aware, if businesses that are in Dayton, not if you are a business owner and live in Dayton and then you own a business that's in Maple Grove or in Plymouth or
Champlin.
Whatever, yeah. Or you're a C-suite individual at a larger company like you mentioned, Madoff. I'm the CFO of Best Buy and I live in Dayton, so. That is not an individual who is allowed to be on the EDA currently that I'm aware of.
If that is the case, I think it's a miss, because I think if we have business owners in Dayton that don't have a business in Dayton as well, I think it'd be good to hear from them and understand what we can do to make it more business friendly. If we're trying to get more businesses in Dayton, I just, in my mind, that's a miss. Wow, just wanted to bring it up and hopefully the EDA gets, gets it.
It'd be nice to know what other EDAs, well, a lot of EDAs are the council.
I say, Champlin doesn't have an EDA. Other major cities, big enough, don't have an EDA, so I don't know.
They do, but it's
It's, it is the council midpoint. They don't have a separate
No, but they operate it under
Yeah.
Under the EDAs.
Correct.
A lot of communities do not have a separate board.
Yeah.
That is the council.
And Ramsey? Somebody, somebody around us does, and I don't remember who it is, but
It might be Ramsey. I did not do
Yeah, anyways. And I don't know, I wonder if somehow state statute has something to say about that. I don't know, but.
That was just my thought on those two things from the EDA. Uh, the Planning Commission meeting, they talked about the pledge to residents. I thought that was really great, so good to them. And, uh, I think it's a good way to go and make sure that they represent the residents. Um, and then Zach, have you talked to any of the chairs of the commissions about coming in at the beginning of the year to do a recap of how that showed?
I have not reached out to them again, but I will.
Okay.
I know we talked to them in, uh, was it August?
Mid-year, yeah.
August or July. I will reach out to each one of those chairs to just have another touch base.
Yeah, we talked about doing twice a year.
Yep, yep.
That's all I have.
Okay, on to council business. Item H.
Yeah, we're, we're in business. Okay, item H is the concept plan for Spanier. Um, to, to try, it, it's easier to kind of tell a story. I'm, I'm gonna try this and, and kind of lean on Jason, correct me. So currently, this probably, let me find a bigger map here. Okay. So currently we have sewered water that is roughly around this area now. Is that?
Sewer is their water is in the west.
Sewer. Yeah, so the intent, the city's intent is to extend sewer up through these properties um, somehow to get up to Dayton Parkway and then run it through the, the DDL property and then eventually going north. Um, so then the problem to solve is how do you get from point A to point B? Um, and the answer to that is through the Spanier property. Uh, so the staff approached Spanier about a year, year and a half ago about the possibility of, of running, whether it's a road or, or an easement through the property, um, they're fairly receptive to that. Uh, we looked at a couple of different options of, um, and the Spaniards have these two properties here. Of either running it on this red line or this blue line. Uh, the blue line makes a lot more sense. The, uh, Spaniards have better use of their property. And they would be giving up quite a bit, in which the case the city would be buying that property and then constructing the street. Um, for the concept plan, these buildings are existing and would stay as it is. Um, it's that eastern property where, uh, structures would be removed and then a new building would be built. Uh, what's drawn here is a multi-tenant building, so you have three tenants uh, with garage doors that are facing east, and then an office on the south side. Um, during the planning commission's discussion, there's the, the discussion of should this be flipped? And you have a, essentially a lot with three front yards. Um, so if you have three front yards, which is the main front yard, essentially you're going to have more visibility on the north side, so the discussion was to flip this building around or flip the office around, and I believe the applicant was, uh, agreeable to that. Um, there was also the discussion that it is likely that the tenant will, or a tenant will need outdoor storage. Um, where's the best place to put outdoor storage when you have three front yards? In that case, the lesser front yard would be on the south side. So as it is today, when you're driving down 113th, um, you know, you think of the south side as being the front yard, but once this road gets built, that all changes. Uh, the bigger kind of discussion, uh, is what is the future of 113th? So in the comprehensive plan, it guides this area as business park. So you think of, uh, larger buildings of, of warehousing and manufacturing as opposed to the current use, which is, uh, smaller businesses of, of contractor yards and other service industries. Um, the question for the council is what is the future of this area? Um, is it to keep it as it is with smaller businesses? Or is the intent to encourage redevelopment where you're going to have the larger buildings? Um, that's not something that needs to be solved tonight, but it, it's something that does need to be solved once a plat is submitted, um, for use, whether it's compliant or not compliant with the comprehensive plan. So once again, where I'm going with it is, um, the city's intent is that this street will be built, I'm gonna say 2025, thereabouts. Um, that's going to lead to plating this property and constructing a new building. Um, depending on what that use is, it's going to, if, uh, the use has outdoor storage or is the contractors here, it's likely to require a conditional use permit. In order to approve a conditional use permit, it has to be compliant with the comprehensive plan. And then that's where we run into the question of the comprehensive plan guides this area for large building industrial, whereas this is small building industrial. So do you want the large distribution centers and warehouses? Or the current, um, uses of the smaller businesses and contractor yards and so on? Uh, this is a, a elevation drawing and site plan for the building. And, um, there's notes in here of just the way that the busi- the lots laid out, there's a couple of variances that are needed. One is going to be is when the city builds the road, the lot becomes too narrow and a variance would be necessary for lot width. Um, to me, that's an easy variance to justify. Um, critical issues, once again, it, it's zoning and then also the comprehensive plan. So the bigger issue is, what do you want, what does the council want for the long-term future? Is it, where we have the current top picture, which is the smaller businesses versus the bottom picture, which is the larger warehouse distribution facilities? And again, this is not a problem that needs to be solved tonight, but it's something that we do need to deal with at some point.
Well, in my opinion, it's going to determine, I mean, if you want the bottom, you gotta wait until those businesses decide they're gonna leave. And that could be 15 years from now, it could be never. Um, if you go back, I've got a question on the, the, uh, the alignment of that roadway. If you go back to the teal line and red line, what is the purpose of, uh, bringing that roadway? Currently, there's access to that lot from the, uh, south, right?
Yes.
I want to see the purpose of, uh, bringing that roadway down there.
Yeah, the, sorry, the, the roadway is necessary, uh, if and when Dayton Parkway intersection is expanded at County Road 81, which will become heavily trafficked. So access from 113th to Dayton Parkway will become increasingly difficult. At some point, we presume essentially impossible. There will be a concrete median, um, extended as well, which will limit it to a right-in, right-out at, at a best-case scenario.
Yeah.
So the rerouting of 113th or an alternate access point is required. So this has been discussed for, um, quite a while, um, hence the additional lag off of the roundabout that was constructed up on the Cubes development. Um, this is an opportune alignment to come through one of the properties. The alternative was to continue the roadway east, then go north, then bring it back west, creating essentially a horseshoe, if you will, um, for the access. Much more land involved with that, much more roadway to construct and maintain. This was much more efficient, so. Uh, using the opportunity with the redevelopment of the property was, was seen as a, um, efficiency.
This also also s- link up sewer and water, right? That's where we started this conversation, was getting the sewer from the south up and the water from the north-south.
It seems, it seems, that's the main purpose.
But it's dual purpose, I think. I think it's that, and it's because 113th is needed.
The roadway will absolutely be needed, maybe not for some time.
Right.
But that will absolutely be needed in the future. The sewer will be needed for the DDL and everything beyond that, so. Um, the alternative, the, the sewer as well could be extended through the east, but it's through, it's all through low wetland areas. It's, it's certainly not preferred. Again, bringing that pipe west, west and then going north is the preferred option, again, aligning with the roadway.
So which alignment, um, is preferred in, in view of the, the, the long-term plan? Like, you know, if it, if it, we ultimately go down the path of continuing larger facilities on these, on these properties?
So I'll, I'll point a few things that were considered, um, might not all be directly to your question, but we can circle back to it. Um, both the city as well as the property owner looked at the two options and both preferred the teal um, for a number of reasons that, that we were looking at, um, from the property owner's perspective. I don't want to speak for you, Tom, but the, the thought is this may leave more flexibility, if you will, being that he owns both properties, just to not build a road between them. If for any reason in the future, he would want to combine those properties. Um, feel free to speak up for them.
Yeah, it makes sense to give it on one edge, that makes more sense.
So for that purpose, um, implementation just makes a whole lot of sense. Um, the red alignment actually takes out both of their septic systems on both properties. So in the, the lower right of the easterly property and the upper, or sorry, lower left and the upper right of the westerly property. So that, that was probably the, I guess, the primary for both. Um, from the city's perspective, for the utilities, the, the teal or the, the blue alignment allows a straight shot, if you will, from the south. So, um, for nothing more. Not that a jog couldn't be put in there. But bringing that down to the Stensley property and continued, um, uh, for that sewer connection, it just creates a, a straight line to line there, and it aligns well with the wetland to the south. So it, it creates some efficiency in the sewer extension as well. Um, to your question about the, the larger buildings, I would say probably, uh, similar. The teal would better, um, accommodate a larger structure or building on the northerly part of 113th. Reason being is that there's pretty significant wetlands immediately east of here. If we were to use the red alignment, it would use, it would make a tougher use of space, if you will. Um, moving it over to provide the, the biggest continuous piece of land may be beneficial.
Okay, so in terms of the longer view, this doesn't handicap us, the teal alignment. There was, um, comments at the Planning Commission about flipping the buildings and that the applicant was, uh, was open to considering that. I, I guess I'm not sure what, I couldn't follow along quite what that means, flipping the buildings.
Uh, essentially moving the office, uh, part of it from the south side to the north side.
Explain the benefit to that. I don't see the benefit.
Uh, it would be, you'd give better visibility from the Parkway if you had your office on the north side and
Exposure.
Exposure thing.
Yeah.
I don't think either one of them is really, uh, I would say not the front yard, which is what John had mentioned with the three front yards. Essentially, you have the property to the west, there's a front yard on 113th, and then you have two front yards on the new property after the redevelopment. One on the north side and one on the south side, depending on which way you're looking at.
So Jason, if we, instead of have, and then this came up with the planning commission too, but instead of having the, the arc there, just make it an L, thinking that that road at some point would continue into the DDL, does, does, does that, is that so likely that we, we should consider going up on the east side? Or is the wetlands gonna preclude?
Uh, no, that, that could be accomplished. In other words, the, and I, I think, this is my recollection, the connection to the roundabout In other words, the, and I think this is my recollection, the connection to the roundabout instead of the main road, if you will, extend itself, that it would instead extend east. And the connection from one hundred thirteenth would basically tee into that one. So that could be achieved. There wouldn't be anything.
But I mean, what I'm getting at is that that pretty strongly implies DDL is going to come in at that point.
DDL will connect to the teal regardless, so they're going to utilize this as their primary access. So really, the proximity of the intersections is about the same in both cases, so probably one's not that much different than the other.
I'm just wondering cost-wise, if coming up on the east side and doing that horseshoe in the end is cheaper.
Oh, the road was.
We won't be building the road for that property.
The horseshoe part, the extension of one hundred thirteenth is tough.
Because of the wetland? That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I thought you were referring to the east-west portion of this extension. So yes, that loop is costly, but the, what's your, sorry to point for those online or watching, for this road to extend east here and then this would just tie in. That could be achieved if this road were to be extended to say East French Lake Road or other. I will note that we have spoke with the developers of DDL and they were, I'll say, very opposed to a roadway extending the length of their property just because of the space that takes with dedicating the right of way and then increasing the setbacks from it. So this seemed less intrusive or impactful to their property.
Is there any benefit to the red? I mean, I didn't, I didn't see any benefit. I haven't heard any benefit. I'm kind of wondering why we're seeing it.
I mean, if you wanted to connect those areas, so I think land use is probably an important question for that. I mean, this is a predominantly industrial area or a completely industrial area. If it's single-family homes to be to the east, I don't know if that connection makes as much sense or not.
No, I was talking about the red versus the teal.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't think there is any, to be honest. We started with the red because that was our initial thoughts. We originally started with the red and then after.
Being a little more direct.
Yeah, like.
A straight.
And then after thinking it after a while, we had the engineer's team put their heads together and said, well, why don't we just do the blue one? It makes more sense for a lot of different reasons, so.
We fine-tuned the fat line.
Correct.
So if this is left as business park, they would need a CUP for this use?
I mean, the intent, if it's business park, you're going to try to attract the larger warehouse distribution buildings, not the individual contractor yards. You know, so it's a question of what is the highest and best use for this area? I'll say that, you know, Dayton needs a small business park or industrial area where you can have contractor yards. And if it's not here, it's got to be someplace else.
Yeah.
I have no problem if it's here. It doesn't bother me one bit personally. I think we need to be mindful of the outdoor storage because I've seen the aerial photos of some of the businesses there and there's a lot of outdoor storage. I think we need to be mindful of kind of how much of that we continue to allow as this progresses and develops, but I'm okay with the, what do I call it, small business industrial, whatever you want to call it. I mean, to me, what the plans look like was like a garage shop or something. Then that's great. I have no problem with that, so, yeah.
This is concept plan, so any comments or?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the light industrial.
Will help us.
But what would we have to do to deal with that in the short term since it's already guided?
For this property, it's, once there's applications for development, I think we would have to address the comprehensive plan, so amending the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so it's just amended for this.
Probably different than we do with the old business development.
Yep.
Just take a little bit longer, which is more lead time.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have a problem with outdoor storage being, I mean, there's a question about it being, I think, in the back or where it would be.
There is no back on this one. There's three front yards in the other property. Like, that's the concern, right?
To me, that's the back. I don't know how we deal with cost. We can't, you know, we can't rightfully assess anybody here, right? It's an assumption since we already did.
We assess them when?
Well, I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean, isn't that one of the problems we're going to have to deal with here, how to pay for this road?
I can just make a note on that. There could be an assessment, I'm not suggesting there is or should be or will be, there could be assessment if benefit is demonstrated to the properties. I just wanted to know what we're looking at now is acquiring the right of way to allow the construction of the road in the future. And then the construction of the road would be considered at a future date, most likely, and especially if the one hundred thirteenth avenue utility extensions and street improvements does go through, which is currently slated for twenty twenty-five. We will be initiating the feasibility study to look at that project. It will be in front of council in March, I think the second meeting in March. Additionally, we'll be meeting with the property owners probably mid-February. We haven't finalized a date yet, but just to make them aware of the project, what's going on, the ideas we're thinking, get some input on other concerns that should be addressed. So some of those details will be addressed as part of that study is what I was going to point out. And there will be almost certainly assessments with some of the other improvements, so these will be considered as part of that study again, not necessarily that the cost specifically to these will be assessed, but they will be looked at as part of that overall project.
Speaking of that, we probably should review our special assessment policy, so I'll probably bring that before we do the March meeting, so.
A question pertaining to the setbacks. We're way off on one of these setbacks and how big an issue is that I didn't look at the map and know which side, east or west, that is, that comes into play?
I believe it's the west. And I think, and I haven't done the math on there, but I believe it can be adjusted by just making, I'm going to say, the front parking lot a little smaller.
So we can get some of the thirty-five feet back, maybe?
I, we can figure it out. I'm not too worried about that.
Okay.
Well, and, yeah, the hardship may be partially ours.
Yeah, the hardship is being caused by us putting the roadway through this. Otherwise, there wouldn't be no hardships.
Right. I understand. That's kind of where I was going. It's okay if we want it.
Not always.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Tom or Bob were looking for any more direction, but I don't think so. I guess if you have any questions for the council.
None at this time.
Okay.
All right. Onto item I, River and Trail is east.
Yes, mayor and members of council, we're, the applicant has requested that this one be tabled because they want to go to the February thirteenth meeting, so we won't have a discussion on it tonight, we will have it on the February thirteenth meeting, so it needs a motion and a second for that, please.
Okay, any motion second to table this?
On motions table, secondary request.
Who was the second, sorry?
Scott.
Scott.
Okay. I want to, if you ever say aye.
Aye.
I want to say no. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item J.
So this is a concept plan for one six three six one Dayton Avenue and one eight five four one Levy Street. So this is the, just geography here, we have Robinson is what looks like the main street that goes through the Dayton Village. Dayton Avenue is the, let's use the arrow here, we have Dayton Avenue and then Levy Street. So this is two properties that are outlined in red. The street view from the riverside looking south and then the Google River view from the Mississippi River looking, or close to the Ramsey side, looking south. On the left side, and this is just orientation for everyone, so on the left side, we have the historic village framework plan from two thousand eight and then the current adopted framework plan of twenty thirty, twenty twenty-three. It's a little hard to see, but the area is outlined in red, this red box here and this red box here. So the difference is in two thousand eight, the plan was townhomes on the east side of the block and apartments on the west side of the block. The current twenty twenty-three framework plan is townhomes. What the applicant is proposing is townhome. So we have two buildings, each building has three units. Front faces Levy Street towards the Mississippi River with the garage in the back with an access on a private driveway that would then access on Dayton Avenue. Let's see, two critical issues, and actually there are three critical issues. One is the alleyway, the second is design standards, and the third is sideyard setbacks. Sideyard setbacks is probably the more difficult one. The properties are intended to be zoned for GMU three. Minimum setback is ten, the minimum setback is zero. Maximum front yard setback is ten feet. So once again, within the village, the intent is push buildings to the property line and have more, I'm going to say, more visibility on the street. So it's going to appear more like a small town and less like a suburb. The plan here is a ten-foot setback on the front and then the sideyard setback varies a little bit. So the buildings, each building, I believe, or each unit, I believe, is twenty-two feet wide, so for three units in one building, that's sixty-six feet. Doing the math together, between the four setbacks, between the west, between the two buildings and the east, there's thirteen feet to divide among the four. I believe what the applicant is proposing is a two-and-a-half-foot setback on the east side and the west side, and then I think it's an eight feet in between the two buildings. The big factor really is as it relates to the building code and fire code. That all has to do with the building materials that the units are made out of and if there's any windows or access between the two buildings or on the sides. There's also the practical issue of how much space is appropriate or should there be between buildings? So on the neighbor to the west, there is a privacy fence or I'll say, just from a practical side or usability side, how much space should there be between the neighbors, privacy fence and the side of the building? And I'm going to say everyone will have an opinion and that one opinion is necessarily the correct one. So we all have, I'd say, but that's one of the things that, the guidance that I'm looking for for the council of how much space should there be. So once again, what's proposed tonight is two-and-a-half feet, two-and-a-half feet, and then eight feet in between the two buildings. Okay. Second critical issue is the alleyway. What is staff is requesting is right of way for a twelve-feet paved and six, I think it's sixteen feet total, right of way for an alleyway that would connect Dayton Avenue and Baxter Avenue. The intent of the alleyway is to service, you know, these townhomes are going to be serviced off of Dayton. It's a fair assumption that if and when these two homes are built, it's, you could essentially duplicate this development over here. The alleyway, more or less, will benefit the redevelopment of properties along Robinson Street. Once again, the intent is that as those buildings are torn down and replaced, the new building will be pushed up against Robinson Street, which means access off of the alleyway for, you know, let's say if it's a commercial residential use along Robinson, those residents and customers are going to access off of that alleyway. As far as sewer and water is available, and I'm going to lean on Jason a little bit, it can come from any of the four sides of the block. What probably makes the most sense is run one of the utilities along the alleyway. That way, you're not digging up the street as much. And I guess what I'm going to say is it makes sense to run utilities along the alleyway that will service the properties along Robinson as opposed to having utilities along Robinson, which you would then have to tear up at any time you put in a new building on the north side of the, essentially our main street.
So I have a question related to water. And Gary, you got here at exactly the right time, so thank you. Thank you for your entrance here. So my understanding is these buildings are going to require residential sprinkler systems. And I've heard in the past that our fire hydrants in that part of town are Hollywood fire-to-fire hydrants, right? So how do we have the capacity then to run a sprinkler system in a building if we don't have capacity to properly fund a fuel, a hose?
So in this case, this is a residential, we'll run off the residential pressure typically when they design those. So you're talking, you know, sixty to eighty PSI, probably sixty, I'm not sure in that capacity, but it's probably somewhere in there. So it is a lot different than some of the others, but to your point, Councilman Fashat, we're limited as far as the amount of water. I was under the impression that we had two thousand gallons. We have one thousand with a thousand gallons of pressure to make that work. So we're very limited in that capacity to, you know, to support something in this capacity a little bit.
So I'm not very familiar at all with residential systems. Do they have like Siamese connections on the building, like a commercial building would that you would hook on to?
No, typically not. It's like the townhouses down here, I just drove by. Those typically, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, it just depends on how the fire engineer designs the system. In this case, to your point, it would be beneficial to have that Siamese so that we could support those sprinkler system, that we could support them from our trucks themselves because we're going to bring in either the engine with sixteen, seventy hundred gallons of water initially, being the stations close by, we'd be able to support it that way.
Seems like if we're concerned about, you know, how many minutes can you run this system, I think is what it comes down to. Is it, and is it long enough for you to get there, hook up and supplement it?
Yeah, how long is a thousand gallons going to last?
Well, typically, we typically say we take length times width divided by three and end up with kind of our gallons per minute. We need to overcome, we have to have enough gallons per minute to overcome the BTUs to extinguish the fire. So at the end of the day, I think this is what, more or less two, three plexes or six plex altogether, I think in some concept. Typically, we're running a hundred and fifty gallons a minute. So, you know, if you look at the water system to a thousand gallons, I mean, as we discussed with the group that came through here earlier this week, we really have less than thirty seconds of water based on our storage tank in the old village.
Okay. Well, I guess that's a bigger question than, you know, than just this development, but I think this is the first one in that area that's going to have sprinklers in it. It seems likely for, the code requires that expense, we ought to be able to supply enough water for them to work.
Yeah, there is slightly more than a thousand, so a thousand is in the tank itself. Obviously, the wells will pump out as much as they possibly can and can run at an efficiency. And I'm not sure how much the gallons per minute those two wells can run at the same time. That would be a question for probably Martin.
Well, one of them is running at three hundred gallons a minute and the other one's capable of four hundred gallons a minute. You can run them both together, so you could get up to seven hundred gallons a minute.
So that will help us get a few more minutes out of it. Again, the same pressure isn't being used in a commercial as it is residential, so we probably get a little more time on the residential, so.
So Gary, what's the volume on a, so let's say all six of these fire at once? I mean, really, how, what's the volume on all that? I still can't, I wouldn't think it'd be much.
I don't know exactly the dimensions, but for example, if we have a sixty by one twenty divided by three, end up, we end up with about four hundred gallons per minute, assuming that that's one floor. So I'm assuming these are at least two floors, so we take that into account for extinguishment. But that's assuming, again, that whole floor is on fire. We don't typically have, you know, the whole thing on fire at one time, but if it was, we're working, we're looking at the worst-case scenario.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm not, I guess that answers my question. I'm not sure it makes me feel better about it, but.
Second critical item is design standards. Let's see. Okay. So on the home, so that we have the front of the house and the back of the house, and then both sides. This is the side that's facing the neighbor to the west, and then on Dayton Avenue to the east. The city code does require masonry on the building, so it's, has a corner lot. This unit is essentially, it has two front yards. The code's intent is to, is to wrap masonry from the first floor along Levy Street and also use the same on Dayton Avenue. A question for the council is if there's any desire to also require masonry on the, the west side that faces the neighbor's house. Granted, the, go back to an aerial. There is a privacy fence. I guess I can't remember if it's covers from the house to the back or the front yard or not. You know, it's the council's opinion of whether you want masonry on that side or not. Within the code, it, it does require corner lots to have sixty-five percent of the building frontage, or to have sixty-five percent of the lot frontage included building. In this case, it's forty-three percent. So I, I guess my opinion is I think this was probably an oversight of when we wrote the code of, you know, you're not always, you're not gonna have a house that's the same dimension. It's going, not necessarily gonna be as wide as, as it is long. So, this is something that would not be code compliant, but it's not necessarily not keeping with the spirit, within the spirit of the code. I think we just didn't think about this enough when we wrote it. So, once again, the code requires sixty-five percent of the lot frontage be building. You know, it obviously meets that on Levy Street, but when you get in the side street, it's forty-three percent. And when you have the backyard, that takes up the majority of the lot.
Seems like the aesthetics of it is really the, the aesthetics of it is really the, what this is all about.
It is. So, you know, one of the problems when we write codes is it has to be tested. And it, it's hard to think of every variable when you're testing it until you have something in front of you that doesn't work. In this case, this is it.
Yeah. Our fence ordinance has provided us a couple examples.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it seems like the goal is to have a nice-looking building, and that has more to do with how it lays out on that particular set of walls than it does about a particular percentage. So, I guess I wouldn't be concerned about not meeting that if the, you know, if the best-looking building is something less.
If this home, you know, this end unit were twice the length, it would not necessarily add to the property, I don't, I don't believe. Not significantly.
And you may have a hard time getting in the back, right?
Uh, yeah.
Very difficult.
So speaking of that, what, that part, so the way this is designed, you have a two-car garage, there's a driveway, big enough you can fit two cars. There's also parking where you can fit an additional two cars. So there's plenty of parking and, and storage. There's also green space in the back. So the idea of, you know, where do you put snow? It's going to be more than likely in the back here. There's not a lot of space in between the two garage, garage door openings. So here's a floor plan. So we have first floor, and the intent, these are going to be slab-on-grade construction. The main entrance will be off of the front porch. You have the living area, kitchen area, and the garage, and then bedrooms that are upstairs. One of the changes that the applicant made between City, Plan Commission and City Council, won this one to the, to the Planning Commission, these roof lines were, I'm gonna call it more of a ski slope here. And then, so the, the applicant made these more of a, I believe it's a hip roof, and then added these balconies. So it'll be a very nice touch that will be an amenity to the homeowners of opening up their balcony doors out onto the river. Yeah, so questions?
I don't have any questions. I have thoughts. This is a concept plan, right? So, my, my thought is, we look at the original plans, I know the Lucero family's here today. So, look at the original plans, it's kind of like a L shape on the corner with the townhouses, with the original, like, master planned area. And we're kind of utilizing, I, I understand why we're trying to utilize them based on the river, right? The river's a, a resource. We wanna promote it where we can. I think, personally, I think that the space best fits that, that kind of bend overall, whether it's four on the front and two on the side with the alleyway at the bottom. I think that fixes your, probably a little bit of your spacing. I think it allows a walkway from the corner sidewalk. When you look at the area of view of how the sidewalks are, it's actually really wide there, to kind of go back between the two. So you have two buildings, you have space to get the sidewalk out, like you'll walk out to the, the river itself and the park that's right there. That's, that's beautiful. So I think that would help. I think would also help with the setbacks, help with your masonry issues around the front, because now you have masonry on the front the whole way around. And then if you move the alley, I think, down towards the bottom, the south side of the property, I think that behooves us for long-term planning. So that's my, my thoughts on how we can fix, fix some of the issues that were brought up, and also help maybe make it look a little bit nicer and help connect it off to the, the river easier.
Just in summary of, of repeating the framework plan that's here.
Yeah. I think it could look nice. You could put like a covered over between the two buildings. That way, it's like a covered walkover between the two, and there's ways to do it. I think that'd look really nice.
And your suggestion is four towards the river, two towards the Dayton Avenue. And not just a suggestion.
Yeah, four and two, three and three. I don't make the plans, whatever works. It doesn't, it doesn't make, I think trying to utilize that space a little differently would, would help fix, I think could help fix all the issues that are running too. But again, I don't draw them up, so what am I, but that's my thought.
Yeah, actually, I, I like the, the layout, the six across, and the alleyway. And I think we're just asking for a right away, right? I mean, the...
For the alleyway, yes.
Yeah. I did, as far as the... Can you come on up here? I, I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of curious about why you think. So, the setback on the east side there, I'm, I'm inclined to think that could be zero. I mean, we've, we've done, go ahead.
So the details are what matters. So in this case, you're going to have roof soffits that hang over the walls, you know, whether it's twelve inches or twenty-four inches. You're going to have mechanical equipment, you know, vents and pipes and all that that stick out.
So that's the two-and-a-half feet that you're talking about?
It's more than zero.
Yes, yeah. So, so, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. I very much appreciate all the conversations and work that has gone in, even to getting to this point. It's been over two, two years, and this has been, I'll say, it certainly has been lengthy, but it's been a valuable conversation, because this is an important area of town, and deeply humbled that, that we've had this opportunity to explore this. So just a little bit of background on the setbacks. So the, the fire code requires two feet. If you can't protrude into that two feet. And so the footprint is two-and-a-half feet back to allow for that gabled protrusion to be six inches, which bumps right up to that two feet. So that's the two, two ends. In the middle, we have to allow for the utilities. The, the gas and the electric are gonna be coming up the middle there. And so there are four feet setback on each side, allowing for eight feet. Now, the reason we, or how we come up with that, we did a lot, my wife and I did a lot of exploring in Anoka with developments like this, and a Maple Grove. And we actually, in the Anoka development, we actually took our tape measure and measured the, the foundations there, and they were eight feet. So that's kind of, that's one of the elements that we used to, to put this together.
So does the eight feet become seven then with that, that overhang on the side of the building?
Yes, correct, correct.
But eight feet to walk through.
For the foundation, yes, correct.
The, the only question that I had really was, so if you have two and a, so in the end, let's say this gets repeated in the next lot. Now you've only got, you know, between those buildings, you, you wouldn't have a lot of space, I guess. That would be up to the, the next, you know, whoever buys that property and does it. But it just made more sense to me if you, if you could get that west building over a little bit and, and get the four feet back on the other side. But no, I understand. Doesn't matter.
No, Mr. Mayor, you're right. I, you know, think in advance, and there's a lot of different variables that go into this, and to Councilmember Tross. I, we, we explore different things too, about coming around the corner there. The challenge is, on that particular scenario, which, again, I was in favor of two until I actually started drawing it out, and that was, so if you could imagine wrapping these around, you have to allow for then a twenty-foot driveway, and then the tw, this, because these two driveways are ninety degrees to each other, you have to, you have, just have back issues going and back up. So by doing that scenario, you're actually gonna lose like two units. So with the attempt to try to maximize number of units, that's why I had them on that same, same road. Going less than eight feet, my conversations with Alfa Utilities, which services the electric, they wanted ten feet, but they were comfortable with eight feet. That was about the minimum they wanted to go. So, shifting that over anymore, I think it's into the, a utility servicing issue.
Why, and this is just a, the, the, the most eastward unit on that group. Why, why is it a mirror image of the, of the other units? In other words, you, I was just curious.
This one?
Yeah.
Why is it a mirror image of?
The other two. So if you, you look at the other two...
Right here?
No, sorry, the other two in the same building. Yes.
Why the two axes is on the common wall?
It just, yeah, it just seemed odd. When you look at the, the...
The mayor's question is, the two left units are the exact same layout, and the right, and the right unit is the exact opposite. It's mirrored.
Uh, I, that would be more, you know, that's, uh...
The dryer, the way?
There's pluses and minuses, because you have all the plumbing now together.
I did notice.
Back to back.
And, and the kitchens were back to back, but then the bathrooms were, yeah. I, I was just curious if there was some other reason.
No, there was, there's no, yeah, no deep thing beyond that. Then, then that's what the architect was suggesting.
Kitchen was back to back, so.
It seems to me that, I, I like this layout, I guess, because, you know, it gets, it's the parking around behind the things you mentioned about access and how much space has to be sort of lost to turning around and, and so on. But I also think of it in terms of, you know, when you rent a hotel room, you know, oceanfront is a lot more valuable than ocean, ocean view.
Looking out over the river, yeah.
Right? So turning those other ones the other way probably makes them less valuable for a resale or even rental, depending on how that lands. So this one makes the most sense to me. The amenity is the river, and you should take as much advantage of it as you can.
And then I'll also add on that, that alleyway consideration. So, part of our objective was to move things up to try to maximize green space here. So minimizing driveway to twenty feet, pushing everything as far north as possible to maximize this, because the alleyway is gonna be significant for future redevelopment on Robinson Street. And so part of the, the conversation in the Planning Commission, and it sounds like some of you or most of you have watched that, so I'm happy to repeat myself, but, we need to, if we have this alleyway down here, it's going to allow for rear parking in the commercial, and maximizing green space now allows us maximum flexibility in the future when such an alleyway were to be paved.
Is there any interest in the council? This is just a question of mine. A six-unit attached versus the two triplexes. So as in taking the whole unit and bringing them together, is there any appetite from the council on that perspective?
I actually kind of like the, a little bit of green between them, but I don't...
Yeah, again, that, not a suggestion. It's just more or less a, trying to get all the feedback now, so we have it ready to go for preliminary plan.
I have no preference either way. I think if it gives a little bit more stuff, my biggest concern is your neighbor to the west. If we're really close to that property line, they might not necessarily, depending where the windows are, want some looking over into their house on the second floor. I don't know if that houses, how big the houses, but other than that, it doesn't make a difference.
I, I assume you're gonna stage these buildings, or, apart six months or some, some of them all the time? You're not gonna build them both at the same time, right?
Completely dependent on market conditions.
Oh, sure.
If you asked me that question even ninety days ago, it's gonna be a different answer. And ninety days from now, it could be different. If I, answering right now, the way that I've been, you know, all of us, none of us have a crystal ball, obviously, but looking at some of the, the, the forecasts, financing is a huge piece. Financing and market demand is, is obviously the, the largest driver into decisions. And so, right now, as we've seen some of the headlines projected to come down, another, what is it, point seven-five percent in interest rates, potentially three, point two-five percent drops. Right now, I'm leaning towards building both at the same time. But, again, market conditions can change like that, so. Allowing for that flex, that's another reason for the, in addition to the financing, because more than four units is considered commercial financing, entirely different animal. So if you're less than four, in this case, three, it's residential financing, which is different and easier. And also, having two separate buildings allows for that flexibility if one now is, is more reasonable, and then one next year, again, driven by market forces.
To your question, Zach, I prefer it to be two buildings, I think, in terms of the people that are gonna live there ultimately. You end up then with four units that only share a wall with their neighbors, and, rather than just, you know, four units that do. And so that, if I was gonna think about living there, I guess that would be a consideration for me.
Again, not a suggestion, just more or less want to make sure all the things are aired out before we get shit fart on those things.
Uh, when we go back to the market conditions, it wouldn't drag out for like twenty-four months, would it? Or could it?
You're talking the construction of all six units?
Correct.
Well, the intent would be, once ground is broken, to have it done within a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty days, so four to five months, sealed up. Because there's, it's obviously, once you get into a Minnesota winter, once you, you know, having things open, you can't finish the interior unless it's sealed up on the outside and...
Though there are some things within the contract, the purchase agreement that we have that have some timelines.
Time line.
I mean, if things come up, which we had written in the contract, then we'll work together to make sure that they're possible. But if he exceeds, if he exceeds the contract, we're good to go.
Yeah. No, it's, it's absolutely in, in everybody's best interest to have this constructed as soon as possible, for sure.
Okay. I like it.
Uh, yeah, I think the buildings look gorgeous, so it'd be, it'd be nice to see that go up.
I think the little balcony things add a lot to that.
I agree.
It's a cool feature.
And something that I learned new on this, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So we, after the Planning Commission, some of their feedback was to incorporate some more historical features. So we, my wife and I, we drove around south, I guess, west Minneapolis area, the lakes area, and looked at some, targeting that area because we're built nineteen-ten-ish, nineteen-twenty. And the Juliet balcony, I wasn't aware of that. So, we saw that a number of times. Another thing that we changed, based on that, what we saw in that construction, is notice the pillars in the front. We're seeing a lot of new construction where the pillar comes down, maybe sixty percent of the way, and then it's on a, on some kind of a concrete thing. Apparently, back then, it was more historical to have the pillar be full-length. So that's why we moved the stone then from those bases, I guess, up onto the, the siding itself.
Did we get anything else?
So if I could summarize a little bit. So the consensus of the council is two buildings, not one, as, as the proposed layout. There we go. It's fine with a two-and-a-half foot side yard setback on the west side and the east side, and then eight feet between the two buildings. Alleyway is okay. Forty-three percent frontage on Dayton Avenue is okay, or building frontage. The question on masonry, so, the code does require masonry on the street side. The question is, should it be on the, the west side? There's no mentioning of the council, so my interpretation is it's up to the property owner.
Yeah.
No, I, we don't require that on any of the residential stuff.
Masonry on the front?
On the side.
Offside, nope.
Only if it's a corner lot.
Right. So I don't, I don't see...
I don't see any... I actually think it would look weird with masonry down the side, personally.
I'm with you on that. I think it does look weird.
So you don't think we should have masonry on the side, either side?
No, not even on the street side. I just think it would be...
What, what is it looking like now, have they drew it up? What's on the east side?
Cur, currently, it looks just like that, which is siding. The, per the code, it requires us to have masonry on the street side of all street sides, which would mean that side of, the east side of the building would have to have masonry on.
Single-family homes on the corner don't do that. I believe they do.
I don't know where, have we seen?
I live one house off the corner, they don't do that.
And that would look funny.
I think it would look funny if it was just concrete. If you look at that side picture, it was the... it was the brick down below.
It would just be all brick.
It would look.
It would just be weird.
Funny enough, they're right. It would look interesting.
We just noted.
Interesting, I necessarily wouldn't find appealing, but others might. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, in fact, maybe we should look at that for a future change, because it does seem odd.
Are you thinking, uh, Hardyburg the whole way around, or aluminum side?
Uh, siding is, is to be determined. It's gonna be, again, driven by the, the economics. We wanted, the, the objective is to get it to look as nice as possible, because this is the first, you know, major, we're, we're cognizant of the first major development in the, in the historic village. We want it to look very nice. At the same time, obviously the numbers have to work, right? So, yeah. Um, what, what you see in the, in the rendering there is we're trying to at least break it up, regardless of the material type, to have horizontal and then vertical, and trying to do not have one big wall type of siding. Uh, I would say back on the, the utility as part of the conversation, you can go back to the man. Uh, I did have the excavator out, and I had a brief conversation with Marty. And I guess the intent would be to bring the utilities of water, sewer water, at least from the front. And then what the excavator would like to do is only open the road once on the north side to put, and I don't know what the minimum distance between the, the taps, I guess, are, but whatever that distance is, then bring two, I think, would he, if you, you even know better than I would, Marty, but I think it's six inches.
Six inches, yeah.
And then, so it'd be two six-inch connections in the street. That would then come into the front yard, and then there'd be three individual.
Like a manifold in the front yard or something like that.
Each would have their own shut-off valves. So it'd be six shut-off valves, but only two connection points in the street. Um, and then what Alford Utilities wants to do is I believe, so the line is running overhead here. They wanna come down, and I think they wanna go underground to the front, and then have, I forget what they call, what they call that in the utility, it's through the boxes in, in the ground. But then from there, come back to the meters that would be, uh.
Is that a transformer?
It's a big green box.
It's a green box.
Paddle, they had, they had a special name for it.
It's a transformer.
Uh, then, uh, natural gas, setup energy would just come similarly down the middle and connect it inside.
They would know.
Yep. Any other comments from the council?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, member, members of the council.
All right. I, um, okay. Parkway neighborhood.
This is the smallest project of the night. Oh, one person left. But, uh, so orientation wise, we're in, uh, south, southwest Dayton, so we have Interstate 94, Dayton Parkway. Uh, this is the Roberg property here. Uh, this property is owned by the city of Dayton. Um, currently, it, it is farmland and woods. So we have Maple Grove, boundary is to the south, and this is Ro- yeah, Rod- all Rogers. Um, what's being asked tonight, essentially that you should consider this as a revised concept plan. So, uh, the applicant had, this project requires a number of permits. Um, everything is hinged on, in environmental assessment worksheet, you know, and I'll cover that a little bit. But once again, uh, altogether, we have, uh, EAW, a comprehensive plan amendment, uh, rezoning, there's a preliminary plat, a PUD, a conditional use permit for multifamily, um, you know, at least nine, and I'm probably forgetting more than that as far as the permits go. Uh, the overall plan, just to, to start big and then to go small, uh, right now, this is planned to be 630 units total. We have, uh, just to start from the, uh, the north and south, this is planned to be a, a commercial area. We have, uh, two apartment buildings. Uh, I'm gonna call it two other apartment buildings, but it, they're joined together, and then smaller, medium-density apartments. So, uh, this area is kind of more of wetland and floodplain. What the developer is wanting to do or intending to do, to do is to develop this in phases. The first phase is this project was, which is 180 units. We've got kind of a few maps here. Um, this is the landscape plan, so it's focused on phase one, which is, uh, two buildings totaling 180 units. Uh, this would be a public street that's, uh, tree-lined with landscaping that goes around the buildings. Uh, floor plans for each one. So starting with the garage, uh, there is one garage stall per unit. So as you can see here, it is one building. Once you get on the first floor, it separates. And so as you come into the apartment complex, um, it will appear as two separate buildings, but they're joined together by underground parking. Uh, you have surface parking that's on the, uh, north side of the buildings, and then second, third, and fourth floors. Now, these are elevation drawings. Critical issues, um, so once again, there's a number of things that cannot be solved tonight. Everything hinges on the environmental, in, environmental assessment worksheet. Uh, to kind of try to explain what that is.
Keep going.
There we go. Uh, which, there's, I believe, 37 different items that can trigger an environmental assessment worksheet. Uh, for multifamily residential is 375 units or more. Um, as I mentioned before, phase one on this is 180 units. So that does not trigger the EAW at this point. What does trigger it, you know, once again, there's 37 items that could trigger it. Trigger one is, uh, which includes impacts to one acre or more of wetlands, um, that are within a floodplain. And so in this case, I believe it's 2.6 acres of wetland that are, that is going to be impacted, and that, that is what triggers the EAW. When an EAW is required, everything else stops. Um, it will take the developer two to three months, I believe, to, three, four months to complete the EAW, which will come back to, eventually to the city council to determine if an EIS is required. The EIS is a much larger environmental study. Um, once the council makes that determination that an EIS is not required, um, you can approve everything else. So the developer's intent is, once the EAW is completed, um, to request approval for the preliminary plat and the final plat of, preliminary plat of the whole project, final plat for the first 180-unit apartment building, um, as well as the conditional use permit for the apartments and, and the other permits. Well, I probably don't need that. Yes, I do. There we go. Okay. Another critical item is emergency access. So I believe by, whether it's the building code or the fire code, once you hit 200 units, you need a, a secondary emergency access route. There's three options that staff has identified. Option one is to use the existing farm road that accesses Brockton to the project. The challenge with this is that there is a crossing the creek. Uh, we don't know the condition of this culvert, if it can support, uh, the fire apparatus, but the assumption is probably not. Um, option two is to keep the emergency access road on the north side of the creek. Um, the challenge with this is that this is all floodplain and wetland, so you're, you're filling in that, and there's a considerable expense with that. Option three, uh, which is probably the easiest, is to connect this cul-de-sac to Brockton. Uh, this is an offsite improvement. So in, um, I'm not sure what month it is, but in previously in 2023, the council did, uh, review a preliminary plat for, this is the Shaney property. Um, that will come back to the council at some point. So probably this spring is the assumption. Uh, they're also going through, uh, wetland permitting, similar to what this project is going to go through. Uh, so once again, we, we don't know what the land use is going to be for the Shaney property, um, but this is probably the less, the least amount of impact, uh, for an emergency access. Um, and staff's kind of putting our thinking hat on of, of what are the different scenarios where this is needed. Um, it's more than likely is if there's, say, if there's a car accident or something, and this entrance is blocked, somehow you need to get access to the apartments. Um, it's least, less likely that we'll have, uh, a hundred-year storm event where we've got flooding. So, you know, again, you know, it's more likely you're, that this is, access is gonna be blocked by an accident or trees or something else, in which case you can get access from this point. Um, and then this would still exist for, uh, you know, say passenger vehicles, but not necessarily heavy, a, a heavy firetruck.
Okay, so this is. That conversation hasn't been had with the Shanys yet, so.
Correct. The, the north emergency exit, access would significantly hinder the Shaney property development, so.
Oh.
It's not gonna happen. Chance is low.
What the plan, we, doesn't mean it's not gonna happen, but like I said, they'd have, it would not be as straight as that, is my guess, is what my comment is.
With the.
Just a note on that, if the Shaney were to put in high-density or apartments and trigger that, they would need a secondary access as well.
Yep.
So maybe that's required regardless of the decision here. It could be.
Will the county allow, I mean, I've been kind of following this along, that there's existing farm access at that south point. Um, but this would be a new access off the county road. Would they allow that for an emergency access?
We anticipate yes. We haven't discussed it specifically with them, because it is emergency-only. Much greater flexibility if it's not open to the public. So it would be fenced off where breakaway bollards or something that it couldn't be used continually. So we expect it would be allowed.
Okay. And as far as, you know, a risk management perspective, we're, we're, we're fine with that. I mean, staff is okay with that, being that, uh, it's highly probable the problem will be on Parkway, not on the driveway or on this. Okay.
I think so, but I can't predict emergencies.
Yeah, we did, we did discuss it, and the, the thought was, this would be the situation for the heavy equipment, the fire engines.
Okay.
The, the alternate access using the existing farm road, we would still like to see improved and utilized for, I'll just say, light duty, you know.
Okay.
Pickups, ambulance, um, for other services, just to give, um, greater flexibility to get services there as needed.
You wanna invite the applicant up? You have some comments you wanna make?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that was the, we came up with that as staff, kind of taking a look at probability of flooding and kind of what the more likely probability of that accident would be. And I was comfortable with that, and, you know, having that ability to, you know, mitigate that, a secondary access in there.
Yeah, I guess I, also, that's, that's good. I wanted to hear that too, but, uh, I think the applicant wants to make a comment.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm getting hanging up out of the door.
Just watch the cord down there.
I know. Did you know that I did that last night? I stripped on the thing. Listen, guys, this is the worst, uh, scenario. I am parenting for the second time in my life, delightfully, and I have two twin girls that are 10. And the first is having their, the first concert of the year, and it's down the street, and I'm a wreck, because I gotta go there. So Ben, my architect, is here, but I just want to share with you how I'm getting a collide. This is the most important project of my life, and I'm really, really excited about what we've got for you today.
So far, it looks good.
This yellow thing, by the way, we've already had it specked out, so if we need for cheap, 80,000 pounds, I think it was, for the culvert, and the yellow is a pathway for sure that we've already at least identified and know that we can, you know, probably get to it. Um, but the project, you know, hats off to the whole team. It's what, what we're presenting today is, you know, an improvement from where we were back in January as a, as a master plan. I think we've got an exceptional, exceptional neighborhood. Um, I'm very excited about it, and I'm like really torn that I can't spend the whole time, uh, but having been, you guys are parents, and I don't wanna spend next year bummed out that I didn't, uh, see my kids. So, uh, with that piece, and thank you for, for having us, and Ben can field all of your questions. And I think John has done a wonderful job so far, and, um, the only other thing I would suggest is, we were hoping to be here for preliminary plat today, this EAW thing.
Yeah.
Ah, please. It's a state, and they've kind of held us, and we're like, you know, oh, you gotta just go with the flow. So we'll be back in some months with all of that finalized and done, but as though you were taking a vote today, we'll welcome all of your comments, any, you know, critique or any, anything. We're here to listen and make it happen for, for everybody. It's a, you know, exciting, uh, exciting neighborhood, so.
Thanks. All right, now go.
I'll be a dad.
I'll go.
Thank you, sir.
I mean that in a good way.
Okay. Uh, another critical issue, so, um, the Rush Creek Regional Trail connects, uh, it's Hassan, Hassan, huh? There's another name with it. Okay.
So that's Crow River.
Crow River. So the very west side of Hennepin County to Elm Creek, a park reserve in Dayton, Maple Grove. The halfway point is this area, so it essentially Brockton. Uh, Three River, the intent is to have a regional trail that goes along, uh, Rush Creek. Yes, this is Rush Creek. Looks like a county ditch, but it, it is the creek. Um, and then also to have a trailhead somewhere in this vicinity. Being that this is the first project in, it's the first project to consider, is this the most appropriate area for a trailhead? You know, what is a trailhead? Uh, it, it is 10 parking stalls, a bathroom, whether that be a bathroom with plumbing or just a porta potty, and then a, a sign for, you know, you are here and how to get from point A to point B. In trying to think of what are the different options for the trailhead, I mean, there's a few. None of them scream out as this is the best option. Um, in the discussion from the planning commission, the, the commission's opinion was to push the trailhead onto the Shaney's property. Um, in talking with the developer for Shaney, they would like to push it onto this project.
Of course.
Um, that decision still needs to be made. I, I'm gonna say there's probably not enough information available today to make a informed decision, um, but we, we can kind of try to map it out and with a few different options, and come back in four months from now with a preliminary plat with, um, some different options. So I, I think as we map it out, something's gonna stick out that this is the best option. And it might be that it's somewhere along Brockton, and it's not really part of either of these projects too. So I don't know if the council has any opinions.
I think there should be one.
Yeah.
You think, okay.
Make their one, yeah.
So having, I guess, my opinion is, you know, having the trailhead, I'm gonna say, on this road, either side. It, it's an amenity to the, everyone that lives here, um, and it kind of serves as a monument to the neighborhood as well.
And I'm assuming Three Rivers pays for it.
They would likely have a significant portion of.
Yes.
Of this. I'm assuming they would look for some sort of, you know, partnership with the city, but it's their trailhead.
It's their driven.
Uh, parking. So, um, the city code requires, uh, I'm gonna say it's one garage stall per unit, and then I believe it's 1.2 stalls or surface stalls per unit. Um, this project meets the one garage stall per unit, so what's the challenging with designing apartment buildings, and the architect might correct me, is you design it around the, the parking garage. Uh, so parking stall can only be so small, um, as well as the parking aisles, and then that, to, that, once you figure out the garage side, then that dictates, um, the area of the, the building. So how, let's see, so we have the garage, uh, floor plan here. Uh, you, there's, let's see. Struggling to find how you get in and out here. There's two entrances.
Yeah, there's one on the very north end that you can see, and then one on the north and west end there, so two separate ones in case a door breaks. You can see it's a very large garage. John, you.
Yes.
That's where we write, we start the design of the parking.
With the garage, so.
Should he come up to you?
From the garage floor or level, this is one building. Once you get into the first level living unit, it, units, it becomes two. As you enter the, the apartment complex, you're driving over the garage, uh, to get to the surface parking, as well as the entrances, you know, to this building and into that side. Um, what is, was being, what was proposed to the planning commission was a reduced, uh, stall size, so the, the parking standard is 10 by 20. Uh, what was proposed was 9 by 18. Uh, the commission was okay with that. Um, they did ask that there be more truck parking, so truck parking as in 10 feet wide and 20 feet long. Uh, the discussion was, is to put 10 by 20 feet kind of along of the back parking lot. Um, there was a question of, okay, if, if we make parking stalls bigger, you're going to have fewer parking stalls. The commission was fine with it. And I don't know if there's a, a revised number, and I don't believe it was a significant change, though.
Yeah, I think you're talking about 1.8 stalls.
And Ben, if, if you can come to the microphone.
And when you, you do something like that, though, I mean, you, there's nothing to preclude eight. And when you, you do something like that though, I mean, there's nothing to preclude a, one of the, a toy car, a small car from parking. So, I, I kind of wonder.
You put them in the backs, they're probably less, they're less desirable, but I don't disagree with you one bit on that.
Yeah, I know.
People with sports cars might park further because they're in the back and there's more space between cars.
And there's more space for door doors, yeah.
Yeah, so, I don't disagree with you one bit on that, but I don't see a downside in it either personally.
Yeah, I, I just, to me, I'm okay with whatever they come up with because they're driving towards their customers, so.
And, yeah, council members, mayor, thanks for having me up here, my name is Ben Delwich with Coswell Sun Architects. And, yeah, just to answer the questions on the parking and what we plan to do for the final submission is incorporate truck parking both in the garage where we can and then on the surface to a little more extent. When we met with the planning commission, the number we had kind of theorized is point eight stalls per unit on site. We felt comfortable, given other developments we've worked on, that that would be okay for usability. We'll try to improve on the one point eight, but that was kind of our target number, one point eight stalls per unit total. One stall per unit being in the garage, so point eight stalls per unit on the site with as many truck parking stalls as we can make.
And then did they talk about the planning commission too, at the entranceway, getting rid of the parking on both sides of the entranceway?
Yep.
Was that part of that number too?
It was, we planned to remove either one side of the parking there. There's a suggestion for a boulevard there in the middle, I think regardless, that's a great suggestion that we plan to incorporate. And, yeah, we'll either do maybe something in angled parking that's a little more user friendly, approachable. But, yeah, we plan to make up for those stalls in that count.
Yeah, I like that idea, I thought it was a good suggestion.
I agree, it's a nice comment to come out of that.
From a safety perspective, I think it'll help.
Yeah, you got people flying in there.
Yeah, and you've got trees or bushes on there, it's gonna, yeah, it's like, it'll be a pain.
Easy and easy.
Okay.
Also, since we're on this, I like the attached garage. I think if you're in the building, there's another pool, you wanna get to the pool, you've got a way in the middle of the winch to get out.
Absolutely, yeah, it was.
Go over there, see somebody or use the amenities or whatever the case may be, right? So, it's kind of nice, it's very U of M-esque, I like that.
Yeah, and it's certainly a sort of a happy accident of the project where we started finding out where the wetland boundaries were, how to approach the building and kind of force that splits from what we had previously shown you.
Okay. Within the comprehensive plan identifies the Rush Creek corridor as a greenway overlay district, so the intent of the comp plan is that there'd be, this be developed as a conservation plan unit development. With that PUD, there has to be a public benefit, so the example would be is that the project is preserving some type of a natural area or greenway or view shed that would not be preserved if this were not a PUD. So, the public benefit needs to be defined by the council and the planning commission, so. In this case, it's, uh, there's not, there's not a clear defined benefit, you know, so I'm gonna put the emphasis that, you know, we, we've worked with the developer to, to try to figure out what that is, but it, it's up to the council to define what that, what it is. So, in this map, we have, what is this, the quality of natural vegetation? So, what looks like the kind of yellow area is the wooded areas, which is defined as good quality as opposed to high quality or excellent. If you get into the north side, that is poor quality. The developer is in the process of connecting a tree inventory, that will identify if there's any significant trees that are worth preserving. So, a significant tree has been, you know, I'm gonna say, a large tree. Significant trees that are going to be removed have, I believe it's a two to one replacement, so two to one as in the inches in diameter, not the number of trees. Okay, questions?
John, can I ask? Can you tell me on the, um, the entrance, when you're coming in off the street, that's gonna be rated for at least eighty thousand pounds?
Correct, yeah, we'll make sure that, yeah, wherever the fire truck goes over, that we do the increased precast load, it's something we've seen and we'll make sure it gets incorporated there.
Okay, I just wanna double check as I'm coming in, then, just to clarify, were you looking to put a divide or a center island when you come in?
That was what we had talked about last time, there was, so, yeah, we haven't thought about that, but turning radius possibly?
Yep, yeah, 'cause I know at Balsam two, I had that removed just because of accessibility of the fire trucks trying to get in. It's a little bit tight coming in that way.
Oh, so you might actually want the median not there?
Yeah, just because of trying to get in, it's, it's difficult for us to make that turn.
I, I like the median idea, so maybe we could figure out if we could work it in.
Yeah, it'd be nice to keep it.
Make the pavement wider there or something, kind of, we'll take a look at it.
And we can get your largest fire truck size and put that in and have the civil engineers validate the curve.
And then give it a little extra space.
Exactly. The curve works for some space, but, yeah, very good note.
I briefly looked at this too and now that we have a little bit more drawings, I had some concerns from accessibility for our fire trucks in general. And I know Mike and I briefly spoke on, I guess it would be the, what would that be, the southeast side of the building where the pool is?
Yeah, upper left hand image there.
Accessibility to that side of the structure from, for apparatus, 'cause I think you were looking at four stories, I believe, from ground to the fourth floor. And with a setback of ladders, ground ladders at thirty-five feet, I have struggles affecting a rescue on that side. That's not a big deal, if I can affect a rescue from what I'll consider the office side of the building. But there's such a setback there and that different elevation changes, I believe, might be a challenge. We can have more discussion, I'm happy to figure out whatever, but I just wanna bring it to your attention.
No, it's a, a good comment and we had, we have the ten foot wide trail, I know that's not up to spec, but at least as a means to get some access behind there. It's a good point, when we met last and talked about that, there used to be the drive entry in on the very south and that provided some further fire truck access behind there, but it's, yeah, a good comment and maybe we'll.
There's some other options too, far as that pool side, that we could do wall hydrants.
Okay.
Where can be exchanged for, so I have accessibility at least from that capacity. But my bigger issue is the height.
Sure.
You know, just from ground to.
Absolutely, yeah, not sell on ourselves, too much more, but, yeah, that side of the building is out of grade about ten feet, so it's probably about a five story building at that point. So, yeah, wall hydrants or anything like that, we'd love to explore that.
Okay.
Did you wanna go through these critical issues or are you? I mean, you also had a question about.
You gotta remember what they were.
Well, there's the parking.
So, park, parking, you know, and going off of the planning commission, so the applicant is requesting for a reduced parking stall size. The commission was okay with that and seeing that head snouting with the council.
Have you updated our code on that yet?
Six inch.
No, so.
I know, I know, I'm just asking.
In the commission's discussion, I, I, and it's all personal preference based on what vehicle you drive and how you drive or how you park. Is, there's more typical standard parking stalls, nine by eighteen, ours is ten by twenty.
Yeah.
If you drive a truck, you're gonna appreciate it ten by twenty, if you drive a small car, it doesn't matter.
You should really appreciate it because you don't get dording, it's easier to get the kids out, like you still appreciate it.
Yeah.
The truck run out of it.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I kind of look at it as in it's, it's, you know, up to them to provide their customers with, with what they like, so. I mean, there's a trade off. You also had a question about the required master plan or?
Yep. So, a master plan, I guess, I think of, and I'll use the, the Dayton Parkway master plan that we're currently doing right now. It's a one square mile plan that we're conducting. This is sixty-one acres?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one acres.
It might be, might, with the city property and the road and everything, it might be up there, but, yeah, fifty-one for the main parcel.
So, to me, I mean, that, this is going to be developed as a plan unit development and serves the same purpose as a master plan in, in this case. If this were, you know, if we're looking at developing everything on Southwest Dayton all at once, you know, master plan might make sense, but that's not what we're looking at. That's not what the application is for.
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with skipping that or using this as the, also, so this has to go into current. Is there any benefit to moving the entire triangle into current?
Yeah, so, related to this project, but in this case, the city would be the applicant of, for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the Southwest Dayton from the twenty-twenty sewer, sewer water staging to the current sewer staging. That's gone through planning commission, I did not bring it to the council because we've got four months before really a decision needs to be made. There's time and it's a fairly minor amendment.
Okay.
I think there is, I think there is, I think there is benefit just doing all of it, so we don't have to do it again.
I just don't see why we wouldn't.
Essentially why we wouldn't do it, I would, your question is, we should do it, it's just we're not gonna do it right this second, but we will be the applicant.
I'm guessing there's some cost to each amendment and, you know.
Yeah.
Staff time.
Staff time essentially.
Oh, alright.
The city will be the applicant moving it forward, 'cause we're looking to move the whole area forward, not just this individual.
And the public hearing, is that going to happen with the next planning commission, is that what you have it scheduled?
It happened, uh, January fourth.
But, that there was a problem with the, in the documentation, there was a CUP not mentioned, or there was some problem with it?
Yes, I'm trying to remember what that was.
I mean.
The public hearing's not closed though, I'm pretty sure, correct?
Well, this was separate, I'll have to look at it.
It wasn't, yeah, I don't know, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't something that gets forgotten about, but.
Oh, okay, so, ye- yes, that is related to this, so the conditional use permits have to be reviewed by the DNR. The DNR has three days for their review.
Okay.
Uh, the DNR has done their review, it was not prior to the planning commission meeting. You know, so, semantically, you know, yes, the, the planning commission tabled it and will have to repost probably the, the public hearing notice. The DNR has done their review and I think we're all on the same page for that.
Was the, was that part of it tabled along with the project?
Yes, and so part of, I'm trying to remember exactly what it was for, if the CUP was related to the fill in the wetland.
I don't, I don't.
The DNR's gonna review a number of things, so.
Yeah, you guys have gotta figure it out, that's.
Well, yeah, we gotta figure it out.
I, I just wanted to make sure it was on some leisure and our, so it didn't get skipped, but.
Yeah, essentially, this is all they could said, this tonight, we, we're not looking for any action, we can't look for any action until we have the EAW accepted and moving forward with the process. So, we're getting this here, have any more concept plan reviews, have any more changes you wanna make, let's make them now.
Yep.
We got about four or five months until everything's gonna be approved, so we wanna make sure we have enough eyes on this thing to make sure that we have everything incorporated that council's looking for.
I.
Before we move forward, so.
So, once again, if there's any big significant changes that the council would like to make, this is the time to provide that opinion. So, if you don't like four story buildings and you want two, that's a critical change.
Yeah, that would be. I do have a, a question about, this project is gonna provide significant park funds. So, do we have, is the park commission looking at this, is there any thoughts to?
They will be.
A regional park in the area, okay.
They will be, that'll be on their February meeting.
Okay. That's all I got for it.
Great question.
Yeah, I guess from my perspective, I, I don't have a, an opinion around the emergency access as long as there is one. So, whatever location ends up making sense to everybody, if you can work with Shaney's or, or not, you know, however you get there is, is okay with me. I think overall, the project looks, looks really good, I think as it's progressed and changed the, the design, it has been refined around the wetland and stuff. I really appreciate the minimal amount of wetland that you're impacting and, and I think overall, it's a great project for Dayton, so I, I'm very hopeful that this can move ahead.
Thank you for the comments here.
I'll echo what David said and then I'll also add, you know, the previous gentleman commented how nice it's been to work with staff, staff also comments how nice it's been to work with y'all. So, we don't always get that when we have developers, so I think it's nice to have a good relationship with somebody who we wanna work with for a long period of time and so I just wanna say thank you back.
Yep, absolutely, yeah, and Michael certainly is very, is very passionate about this project, he has a really great vision for it, that, you know, the adjacency to the, just sort of the natural area is a really big draw, trying to bring park space to the property itself. His proactiveness in getting Parks Department and everyone on board to get the trail connection, so. Can't say enough about his contributions to the overall development as kind of the leader of our team.
Anybody else got anything or? Good.
Nope.
Alright.
Okay, thank you, so we'll come back to the council in four months.
Hopefully, hopefully not longer.
They make up before, if we have anything else that changes, but again, it's still, the formal action will happen in about four months. No, that's mine, that's mine.
Okay, that's, that guy, okay.
Alright, item L.
Evening, mayor and council, back before you tonight is the generator project that has been discussed somewhat recently. So, just a very quick background on where we sit with the project, again, this one involves the installation of backup power at three facilities within the city. The city hall right here and fire station, the activity center and fire station, and then well number two is considered with the project. So, just the background or the history of it, in the, in fall, plans were started for the, and bidding documents, the preparation of those was started. In November, this was in front of council, at which time the plans were approved and the authorization for bids was granted. And we did open bids on January ninth, two bids were received for the project. The low being Lake Town Electric at a total of three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And I just, I will point out and also become evident on the next slide, that we did break it down by base bid and alternate, as was explained previously, just to allow some flexibility in how the award could happen if it, if it didn't align with the, the funding available for it. So, just to note, the grant amount finalized is, is right around two hundred and six thousand dollars. That does require a twenty-five percent local match for a total project cost of about two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Another way of thinking of this is for every dollar the city spends, they get three, up to that two hundred and five thousand dollars. So, that may help in the, the evaluation of, of the, the bidding scenarios coming up here. So, and just to note, anything above that amount is a hundred percent city, there's no, there's no grant money left after the, the first sixty-eight thousand is spent. So, the options before you, the one not listed is you can always reject all bids and forfeit the prop, the, the grant and not move forward with the project. But the, the two likely scenarios I would anticipate would either to be the base bid, which is again, activity center and city hall, or the base bid plus the alternate, which would also include well number two. So, just to point out here, I guess maybe the important consideration, the total project cost is shown there. And then below that is how the split would occur between the grant and the city, being that the first option with the base bid only, you don't utilize the full grant, however, you don't put in more than your twenty-five percent, if you will. If you do decide to award the alternate, that would go over the maximum of grant amount, in which case the city would be responsible for the hundred percent that goes over that. In other words, the city would have to pitch in an additional hundred and seven thousand dollars to make that, that second one happen. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, just quickly on the schedule, pretty long project and that's mostly just due to getting the equipment, more than anything, there's a long wait period. So, January of twenty twenty-five is the completion date, moving forward. So, the staff discussed this and, and our thought would be to do the, to award the base bid only. Reason being is it minimizes city expenditure, if you will, still gets the generators at the two facilities. And we always have the option to either with or without a grant considering a well, or sorry, a generator at the well at a later date, so.
Why was that alternate, is that, is that like a three phase generator, is that the problem with the well number two?
Why did that come in so high?
Because it's so large, yeah, which seems ironic, it can power a whole building and a fire station and the generator substantially larger for a little house. But those, they're, they're two hundred horsepower motors in there and have significant draw, so the, it's a, it's a bigger generator at that location.
Okay.
So, my question around the, the alternate piece of it, the well two part, so if I'm following this along correctly, we, once we have the well or the treatment plant and well five online, you know, that's, that's kind of our, our base load and well two really becomes more the backup because we're adding a bunch of iron that we can't. and well two really becomes more the backup, because we're adding a bunch of iron that we can't treat without that well. So, it, it's probably not as critical as the other two wells by a bunch in my under, as I, if I'm misunderstanding this, please correct me. But my question is then, because of its, uh, I guess not adjacency, but that's the one that is closest to the tower, is there any, any capacity or any functionality that we lose as far as filling that tower if we don't have a generator on this well?
Uh, no, it doesn't matter where they come from, it just backfills the system, if you will. The, the tower just asks, acts as the reservoir, so it just pumps water into the system and it backs up into the well, whether it's coming right next to it or it's the opposite side of it, the water backs up into it, so.
And whatever's on is, is pushing that direction.
Yeah, and, and our thought process was exactly what you just described, is we have backup generators, a, a backup generator at four, which will also power the treatment facility, and then we will also have a backup generator at five. And just, again, and I may be off on this, I think, I think well two pumps at about eight hundred gallons per minute peak, and I think we're closer to like twelve hundred on well four and probably similar on well five. So, they're the larger production as well, so exactly to your point, that's our primary, if you will. At this point, well two is essentially the redundant feed, you know, maybe necessary at peak demands, um, in the summer when there's a lot of irrigation, for example, and we would do what we just call sequester, we would just turn that well on enough to feed the system, just to meet the demand, but it would, our, our reliance on it would be minimal in comparison.
Do we have a mobile generator, can that power pump two if needed, is that strong enough or not?
Unfortunately, there's not a, a mobile, uh, generator hookup at that point, it wasn't considered at that time.
Can we use the grant money to get that added?
Um, we, we have the same question, unfortunately, no, because it wasn't in the original scope, so we can't use this money for it, but that could certainly be, uh, certainly could be an option that we look at, um, again, whether we go through a grant process for it or just look at it as a separate project, but if we do.
While power's down.
I was thinking, if we had grant money there, and they covered three-fourths of it, then we should use it, if we, why not?
Seems perfect, because it's even almost the right amount.
Yeah.
I asked the same question.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, as I understand where, alright, this is, this is related to, this is related to, never mind, I'll wait till we get to it. Sorry, I don't have.
Not the question, we're not on that one yet. Oh, is that, oh, okay.
Yup.
Next.
Me being able to read my own notes again.
Do we budget for the city part already this year?
Yes.
Then I'll motion that we move ahead with the base bid.
We actually budgeted for it, I think, last year, it was in two hundred and thirty.
I'll second, and I'll commend the staff for not spending the whole load.
Yeah, we actually budgeted a hundred and forty thousand dollars for this, so we could have done all three of them, but it just does not make financial sense to do the alternative, so.
Okay, any more discussion?
I have a question after this, the votes don't matter.
Okay.
I guess I have, in, in, um, so the whole point of having them at the Activity Center and at City Hall here is backup for emergency services, in a sense, so, and we don't want to put one at well station number two, or is that included, or are we, we omitting that right now?
We are omitting that.
Omitting it?
Because, well, once.
Only would exclude.
Yeah, 'cause once the pump house gets up, we'll very rarely have ever used pump two, it's the redundancy.
If we were to lose power today to the whole city, well number four would still be on, so everyone would still have water.
Yeah, I'm just.
Uh, one other thing that I, I find is helpful, um, well four is on Excel, well, I hope I don't have this backwards. Well four is Excel, well five is Canexus, so the likelihood that.
Oh, well, it's probably minimal as well.
The lines in my back there.
It's helpful or not, but.
I don't know, I just go back to the, the redundancy, like, if we're out for a fire and we have to have water supply and both of them are down, then there's no point in putting them in at the other stations if you can't even do half your job then at that point, so. I look at, I look at it more in that, that capacity, that, that, that's the redundancy that we're building it into.
How, how much are we running to now, like, what percent of the water is well providing, well two providing now, over well four?
Very minimal, I would say is probably doing about twenty percent now.
Cause well five can do more than well, we think well five will do more than well four, correct?
It will do a little less than well four, I think it's gonna do about a thousand gallons a minute, whereas well four is capable of twelve hundred.
So, with five and four alone, we'll have like a hundred and eighty percent of our need, a hundred and sixty percent somewhere in there, right?
Something along those lines, yeah.
And both of those will have backup generators, if not already do.
And there are different electrical systems, so it would take a serious incident for it to take them both.
Yeah, we may not have to.
A natural disaster does quite a bit, so.
Yeah, the, the only consideration about well two is it does house the, uh, the centralized skater, um, which would go down without any power, but that doesn't mean to say that we would lose the functionality of it, we would just lose some data, we just wouldn't capture the data.
Okay, anything else? Alright, um, so we got motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, motion carries five zero.
What would it take for us to figure out how much it would cost to get the generator hookup at that building? Do we have to have engineering go through, we gotta pay them seventy thousand dollars to spec it out for a twenty thousand horsepower?
I would say a hundred and forty thousand, thank you, David.
But it might be fifteen.
Forty-five percent.
But it could be, yeah, it could be ten, who knows?
We did ballpark it during, was it, and I, I want to say it was around forty to fifty thousand.
Oh, really?
I don't know, does that sound right?
Wow.
Something, and you probably know this better than me, something in the transfer switches has increased significantly recently, is my understanding, so the price of those.
That's not to do engineering, that's the whole project. Yeah, no, no, yeah, yeah. I understand, that's the whole project, that's still a lot more than. Okay.
I, I think that's right.
That was the end of my question.
We did talk about possibly doing a temporary one and then doing a manual transfer switch instead of the automatic one, and that would bring down the price probably significantly.
Seems to me, if you're.
We're gonna do a temporary one there.
Portable generator up to it, there's already people on site doing.
So, that would bring down the price significantly.
Like, under twenty thousand or not?
I don't think so, I think they're still pretty expensive.
Probably thirty.
The manual ones.
Okay.
Okay, item M. Change order.
Change order.
Change order.
Thank you, gentlemen, um, this is the first change order for the wellhead treatment plant. Um, I figured that we would maybe have to discuss this a little bit, um, being as change orders are so contentious. So, I tried to include everything in the, uh, the, the staff report, there's a lot of detail in there. The reason why the, uh, the valves were left off the original plan was, is a cost-saving effort to try and get the cost down to where, you know, we were shaving off stuff everywhere. So, that was one of the reasons why they weren't on there, the project could still be done without this in there, but it's gonna be a lot more difficult, you're not gonna be able to isolate everything, you know, effectively, which you'll need for the startup and for, uh, future maintenance on the, on the, uh, wellhead treatment plant.
So, so the original design, they did consider this?
It was originally in the design, but it was one of the things that we took out because there's an alternative, um, way of doing it, which is basically they're gonna put a temporary flange in there to isolate it out, and then once it's, uh, done, they'll link it back up again and then just close everything up, and then we, if we had to do maintenance, we would have to go in and re-dig it and do it. So, this is kind of a cleaner way of doing it and a longer, longer-term solution. Since we have, um, four hundred thousand dollars in contingency still on this, um, it seems like it would be a good insurance policy for now and for the future.
I guess that was one of my questions.
It just strikes me as odd, though.
Where we had contingency, well, every mechanical project I've ever been involved with, the valves are in, then they're out, and, and then you gotta put them back in, and as much as I hate change orders, there's nothing surprising about this for me, and you gotta own the thing, you need the valves.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a good way of doing it for future operations, you know, if you need to isolate that thing, which we're gonna have to at some stage for maintenance and in twenty years or whatever, we're gonna have to take that out of line.
But what, I guess which. Number, though, on, on contingency than, than I could out of the, well, the data in our packet.
Okay.
So, we've got.
Yeah, I didn't hear four hundred.
I had two hundred and eighteen is what it looked like. And, and it doesn't change my feeling around this, but that would be nice to know where we are at. If we take this thirty-three out, that would leave us at one eighty-five, which is, doesn't sound terrible, 'cause we're almost out of the ground.
Yeah, I think, I think my numbers are a little bit screwed up on that, to be quite honest. I think that, I think that our contingency is, when we did the contingency at the start of this, it was four hundred thousand was just around that, I think it was four hundred and six thousand, and I don't think that's changed, um, this is only thirty-three thousand off of that, so I think I've got my numbers screwed up somewhere, but I can, you know.
In the packet, or?
In the packet, I think.
So, you think there really is four hundred?
So, you're thinking you got three hundred and sixty left?
Yeah.
Wow.
So.
There's a lot of contingency left.
So, that'll lead me to my next question then, how many other things did we purposely leave off so that all of a sudden we keep coming back for change orders?
I think the, the, this one, you know, I can't answer that, Scott, because, you know, um, but we won't be putting anything in there that's unnecessary. I mean, we'll keep it bare bones as, as we can, but this, from an operational point of view, makes a lot of sense.
So.
Well, the thing that frustrates me about the change orders, and Jason said this a while back, is it's, we decide to add something that creates the bill to be more money, and that's why we get the change orders. I personally would rather, if you're gonna give bad news, I want it all at one time.
So.
I can't give you all the bad news, 'cause a lot of this stuff happens as the project moves along, as, as David was saying, you know, you put a valve in here and then somewhere along, you take one out.
This issue here, though, it sounds like nothing has changed between now and back then, but now we're putting the valves in.
Yeah.
Is it really the fact that we, we have gone through this and we aren't using contingency money, and therefore there's less, less risk that we're gonna burn through that, or what changed? Just, 'cause at some point we decided not to, and now we're saying we, we should.
I think it changed, you know, the contractor would prefer to do this because it's safer for his guys to work this way.
Okay.
We would like to do it this way because it's a longer-term fix. I think once the, the budget numbers came in, you know, it's something that we, you know, if we could have had to crystal ball out and known what the, the, the numbers were gonna come in, it'd be something that we would have included in, so.
Okay, okay, so, you see, you're saying that, that the mere fact that the, the project came in as it did, you would have went back in time and added, added this.
Yeah.
Cause I, I get, I get it, I looked at it and it, it looks to me like it probably makes sense.
Yeah.
I, I was just surprised it wasn't there in the first place, because whenever you're doing equipment, it seems like you, you had a bypass.
Yeah, I know, and it was something that was considered, but it's taken out to say, shave some costs, you know?
So, I hear you're saying we're gonna come in under budget and ahead of schedule.
I didn't say that. I think you're putting words in my mouth there, Matthew.
Any other?
No.
And yeah, I, I agree with Scott, it would have, I, I get what you did, um, but it's, it's still, it seems like that was a.
The idea's not nickel and dime, obviously, so.
Well, the, the idea of, here, I'm gonna take thirty-three thousand dollars on an eight million dollar project, thirty-three thousand dollars is nothing. An eight million bucks.
Okay.
I like the way you think.
So, I, I'd just rather have the whole thirty-three thousand right off the bat, and in other words, think about the project and then get what you need to have, so, you know?
Any other, okay, I need a motion and a second here.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed say no, motion carries five zero. And if there are no objections, we'll be adjourned.
Now, in about sixty days, we're gonna get some other change order.
We're adjourned.